Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'll turn to Board Member Debra Napper to get us started.
Everyone would please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of
We are, is there a motion to approve our, oh, hold on. We're now at recognitions and we have a very special recognition this evening, tonight, to proclaim November 2021 as American Indian Heritage Month in accordance with the National Observance. Guilford County Schools is home to more than 750 American Indian students at more than 100 schools, representing more than 30 tribes and nations. Guilford County Schools also employs more than 80 American Indian staff members. During the month of November, Guilford County Schools is providing resources and opportunities to celebrate the contemporary rich diversity of American Indian communities in the following ways: highlighting our American Indian staff on GCS social media channels, collaborating with families to provide a teaching guide and daily activities calendar, working with the Greensboro Public Library to provide books and programming focused on American Indian culture to families and community members, working with the North Carolina History Museum to provide free virtual American Indian speakers on November 19th to all teachers and staff who are interested, and collaborating and highlighting individual schools and teachers centering American Indian culture through the month. I will now ask Board Member Kim Erby to read aloud the proclamation designating November as Guilford County Schools' American Indian Heritage Month.
Declaring November 2021 as American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas Guilford County Schools is home to more than 750 American Indian students from more than 100 schools representing more than 30 tribes and nations. And whereas Guilford County Schools employs more than 80 American Indian staff members. And whereas these students and staff members represent an important facet of the culture, history, and community of Guilford County of North Carolina and other United States. And whereas November is nationally recognized as American Indian Heritage Month, honoring the history and culture of Native Americans and indigenous people in the United States. And therefore, we, the Guilford County Board of Education, hereby recognize the month of November in the year 2021 as GCS American Indian Heritage Month to show recognition and appreciation for our Native American students and staff, signed this ninth day of November by Dina Hayes, our chairperson, and Dr. Sharon Contreras, our superintendent.
Thank you, Kim. At this time, I would like to invite someone who needs no introduction in the community, but Stephen Bell, American Indian Education Coordinator, to come forward and say a few words. Welcome.
Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge the traditional homelands of the Kiawee and Sauer people on whose Guilford County is the homeland for these traditional people. And I also want to apologize to my elders in advance for speaking ahead of you and for those if I speak incorrectly. Good evening, Dr. Contreras, Chairwoman Hayes, members of the board, Guilford County, school community, and colleagues. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Stephen Bell. I'm a proud member of the Lumbee Tribe and the American Indian Education Coordinator here at GCS. I have the blessing and privilege to work with our Native American students and families to work towards establishing a culture of equity established by our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I'm coming tonight at the request of our students, families, and community who are here in person, here virtually, and here in spirit to formally recognize November as American Indian Heritage Month. I want you to think back to your social studies classes. For some of us, that might be a little farther than others. If you remember, the U.S. signed treaties with various countries. The U.S. also signed treaties with native tribes as well. And they should be viewed and treated with that same level of respect. I want you all to think for a moment to yourself, and I want you to name eight countries in Europe. Now, again, thinking to yourself, I want you to name the eight tribes of North Carolina. For so many of us, we're not able to answer that second question. And for those that can't answer that second question, what does that say? That we can name places that are thousands of miles away, separated by an ocean, that some of us maybe have never been to? But yet, we don't know the eight tribes that are all within a three-hour driving distance from here. We don't know the history of the Eastern Band of Cherokee, the Lumbee, the Kohairi, the Wacoma-Suwon, the Suponi, the Maharan, the Hala-wa-Suponi, or the Okanichi Band of the Suponi. We don't know the history, the people, or even their names. Over the last year in this position, I've heard from many students and families who have shared, "I've worked in GCS for over 15 years, and no one's ever asked about my native identity." Others, other students who have expressed pain for not knowing their native history. And then others who have been denied their identity because they were told, quote, "They didn't look native." What impact does this erasure leave on student social emotional well-being, their desire to show up, or their engage in learning? Native scholars like Dr. Leslie Locklear, Dr. Brittany Hunt, Dr. Stephanie Freiberg, and the future Dr. Autumn Asher Blackdeer, and many others, have been able to show that connection to culture is one of the strongest outcomes for academic success, positive self-esteem, and a decrease in mental illness symptoms for Native students. The erasure and stereotypical messages of any individual or any identity we know to be unwelcoming and harmful, the opposite of our district's vision of transforming learning and life outcomes for all children. While erasure, prejudice, and discrimination exist, pride, strength, and resilience still runs deep. In the 1970s, Greensboro Public Schools' American Indian student dropout rate was 95%. A common statistic that we saw across the country in urban public schools. The 1969 Indian Education Report by the U.S. Senate noted this disparity to be "the lack of connection from the Indian Relocation Act, a lack of culturally relevant coursework, a lack of Indian family participation, and anti-Indian attitudes by school administrators and teachers." In 1972, the Indian Education Act was passed, providing opportunity for the American Indian Education Program to arise in Guilford County and across the country. It was also at this time that the first urban Indian organization in North Carolina was founded, Guilford Native American Association. As a close partner, Guilford Native works to provide educational, social, economic, and cultural opportunities aimed at achieving self-efficiency, self-determination, and strengthening the Native American cultural heritage. Today, North Carolina is homelands to eight historic tribes and home to over 122,000 American Indian people. Guilford Native was also just hosted their 44th Annual Powwow. And the American Indian Education Program is growing in awareness and collaborations with a native graduation rate of 95%. This is one of the highest native graduation rates we see in the state and the highest graduation rate for any race or ethnicity in GCS. While I'd love to take credit for all of this, the credit belongs to the indigenous communities and folks like Angela Lynch, Derek Lowry, Pat and Keith Hunt, Mia Malisovas, and many others who came before me. Guilford County Schools is home to over 700 American Indian students, 80 American Indian staff, representing over 100 schools and over 30 tribes and nations. As we step into American Indian Heritage Month, I ask the school board to move forward in making this historical decision and applaud the school board in moving forward and making this decision to join many departments like Communications, Library and Media Services, Social Studies, Student Services, MTSS, and Counseling, and schools like Northwest Guilford High School, Cronodal Middle School, Jones Elementary, Alderman Elementary, and many others who are centering and recognizing American Indian Heritage Month this November. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to work with our incredible students at GCS and the opportunity to speak with you this evening. For Dr. Contreras and Chairwoman Hayes, I have this gift to you. This is our North Carolina Native American Heritage Month poster that's put together by a collaboration of the United Tribes of North Carolina. So I'd like to give this to you as well. Can I share this?
Thank you. I think Anita and I were the only two people that were on the board when the board and the district made the decision to eliminate all of the Native American mascots from our school. And unfortunately, it was a real battle, but fortunately, we prevailed. And we have a long way to go and a lot of work to do. It's not just the elimination of symbols and images, but it is also the integration of the truth and history in our community and the recognition of the first people of this nation. So thank you very much for this, and we look forward to continue working with you. We are now at our public comments, and we have quite a few people signed up, about 24. And so we'd like to remind everyone so that we can allow the full slate of speakers to have their time, to please limit their time to three minutes. And we will begin with Nolan Jones, followed by Richard Herman. Good evening.
I guess you guys would say, are you ready?
Yes. Just a minute, Mr. Jones, thank you. You have three minutes to speak. And then when you have 15 seconds left, an amber light should show. And then when your time is up, a red light should show. So if you'll begin by giving us your name and address, that won't count towards your time, but we'll start the clock when you begin to make your comments. And if you could speak into your speaker so that the board and that our listening audience can hear you. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Nolan Jones. And what I'm getting ready to present to you guys is a keyboard that's revolutionary. And it's so intuitive that a two-year-old can use it. And I put this in front of kids all across the nation, and they're being able to type on it instantly with only 20 seconds of demonstration showing them what to do. And what you'll see here on the right is a child that's a kindergartner. He's going to start out with the Cordy keyboard. And what you'll see is that he has, well, you'll see. I don't know the last time you guys have been out to your elementary schools and asked an elementary student to type their ABCs on their keyboard. It'll take them two minutes or more. And what you're seeing here, he's typing with the Cordy keyboard. And you probably don't know this either, but that the Cordy keyboard is almost 150 years old, that design, and we're still using it, which is inadequate. And these kids will show you that it's inadequate. They've told me, they've expressed to me in these demos, "I'm not using any volume," but if you guys would like one day, I'll let you hear their reaction. This kid right here, he's typing, still on the Cordy. He gets halfway through, and he just pauses because he's trying to figure out the other letters. This is over a minute of him doing this, trying to type his ABCs. And what I do, I come in and I show him exactly how to use the Cordy keyboard, my keyboard, Keystack, that's the name of it. I give him 20 seconds of instruction, and he's ready to go. And what I'm going to show you now, I'm going to start up with a first grader who's typing with the Keystack and a pre-K. The first grader, she's able to type in 18 seconds her ABCs. Can any of you do that? The pre-K, he was able to type his ABCs within 26 seconds. And he pauses for four seconds to check his work. This right here is the way that technology can help our school system. It can save the school board or get you guys to reallocate $10 million a year just by implementing the Keystack keyboard, getting rid of all the baggage of the Cordy system. Because the Cordy system, not only is it antiquated, it's illogical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, by the way, a U.S. patent which was approved this year, April, and a Korean patent approved this year in April for the Keystack keyboard.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next up is Richard Herman, followed by Brad Simpson. Good evening and welcome. As you're approaching the podium, just a reminder that you have three minutes to make your comments. When you have 15 seconds left, the amber light will come on. And when your time is up, the red light will come on. And we ask you to honor that so that we can hear from everyone tonight. If you will begin with saying your name and address.
Sure, I'm Richard Herman. I live at 901 Jennifer Lane in High Point, North Carolina. I teach government, human geography at High Point Central. And I'm a football and wrestling coach. And I've been doing this thing for 25 years, and I appreciate that, I enjoy it. So I spoke to the school board back in July on the inequities of the local Guilford County Schools' teacher supplement. I don't know if you remember that or not, but I did. And I would, first of all, I came here initially to thank you for addressing that, and you guys fixed that problem. And I would like to thank you. You guys don't get enough thank yous, and Nevada boys, but you fixed that problem. And we greatly appreciate that. And then, as things have come up, as you know, I'm here to talk about the local bonuses that all the other school systems have been put in place. As you know, every adjacent school district into Guilford County Schools is distributing retention bonuses to their employees. These bonuses range from anywhere from $2,400 to $5,000 per person. I had a great conversation Friday with Ms. Angie Henry on this topic, and we discussed this issue. She's fantastic. And it was my understanding that the position at that time of Guilford County Schools was the best way to spend the one-time federal COVID money was directly on student learning and not on teacher retention bonuses. I understand this position. I, however, would like to take the position that the best way to serve our students is with highly qualified teachers in the classroom. Every classroom of Guilford County Schools, and we all agree with this and with this position. And I know Guilford County Schools agrees with it, or why else would we be offering up to $20,000 bonuses for teachers to come from other school systems that we need? And we need these folks. So, you know, it's easier, I think, to keep highly qualified and effective teachers than to try to hire teachers from existing school districts. Offering a retention bonus would demonstrate the county's commitment, respect, and gratitude to all the existing Guilford County School employees. As of last Friday, when I looked it up, there were under 135 licensed vacancies in Guilford County Schools. I may and other teachers have taken on extra responsibilities of teaching a fourth class, fourth block due to staffing issues. We've had other teachers that are covering three and four classes times a week. I'm teaching this extra class because one of our teachers left to go to an adjacent school district for more money, a bonus, and a higher position. I just implore you guys to listen to your employees. I know you do. I've been here before, you've listened well. And our students need the best. It's easier, I think, to keep the best educators than find new ones. A bonus would help reflect the value that we bring to our students each day. And I saw on the agenda, you guys have got on the agenda, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do for our district and our students.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Brad Simpson, followed by Bronny Vanderworker, if I said that name correctly. Mr. Simpson, if you'll begin by saying your name and address. You have three minutes to speak, and when the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brad Simpson, I live on Longdale Drive in Greensboro. I'm here as a concerned parent and taxpayer here in Guilford County. I was here at your last board meeting when I was asking about a public request I had made that I had submitted back on September the 9th. I was told at the last meeting that my request would be answered, but y'all were backed up. So I put in a separate request today, and it looks like your request numbers are sequential. So my first request was number 119, and the one that I did today was 156. So that would indicate that you have only about received 37 requests for the last 60 days. So I'm just wondering, when you say you're backed up, what's your meaning there? I think the recent elections makes it obvious that parents are concerned about what is being taught to their children. And my request was for the curriculum for kindergarten through fifth grade. I wanted a list of the approved curriculum. That was my original request. I've been asked to continue to come to the board meeting until we get answers to what we have requested. I can tell you that some parents are beginning to feel that the board is trying to hide something. I'm just, as I come in and I tell people what I'm coming in here for, they're concerned that the fact that you won't let me have that information or let the public have that information, that is there something in the curriculum that you don't want them to see? Again, it may not be, but again, just everything we're hearing all across the country today, there's a lot of concerned parents out here. I don't know the way you come in, but if you're out here, you can see a lot of concerned parents. So is there someone else that I can check with? Or is there another resource that I can reach out to to get this request fulfilled?
There's a member of our staff that, I believe it's Dr. Robinson, that can talk with you about that as soon as you're finished.
Okay, so I mean, I can talk to him after that. So again, I appreciate your time today. And on the way in, just a lot of people were telling me they knew I was coming in here, and they wanted to do away with the mask mandate. They wanted me to make sure I brought that up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bronny Vanderworker, followed by Joanne Gilbert. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you can begin by saying your name and address. You have three minutes to speak, and when the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left.
My name is Bronny Vanderworker. I live in Summerfield. I brought a speech tonight, but I'm going to chuck it because I'm going to speak from my heart. I'm here to represent my three grandchildren who are in public school. And I would like to ask, how many of you wear a mask seven hours a day? No one, I suspect. My grandchildren are wearing a mask seven hours a day, and the only thing this mask does is hold bacteria. I had a mom tell me last night that her daughter is sick for the fourth time in six weeks. Her doctor has diagnosed her with mask face. Her face is breaking out, along with many other things. Never in my lifetime have we worn a mask for illness. And I don't understand why the children, who are the least affected by this virus, have to wear a mask for seven hours a day, let alone the psychological damage that it's doing to them, to be afraid to breathe air and to be around people who don't wear a mask. It's absurd. And our children need to be able to breathe fresh air. They need to see the smiling faces of their teachers and their friends. Does anybody understand that? It's terrible. Children should not be wearing a mask. And so I'm here tonight to represent all the parents out here and parents across the nation who are tired of their children being abused by this whole virus. It's not about a virus anymore. It's about control, and it's about power. And it's not about our children. And I no longer believe that you're qualified to be on a school board that takes care of our children's education. So thank you, Linda and Anita, for standing up for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Gilbert, followed by Tessa Pendley. No Gilbert, Tessa Pendley, followed by Amy Harrison. Ms. Pendley, if you will begin by saying your name and address. You have three minutes to speak, and when the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. We do ask that everyone, I'm sorry for not saying this earlier, refrain from mentioning the names of any students or staff because we are required to protect their confidentiality. So you may begin.
My name is Tessa Pendley, and I live at 1309 Spry Street in Ms. Jenkins District. And I teach at Union Hill Elementary in Ms. Bellamy Small's district. Despite working with children in some capacity in nearly every job I've ever had, I spent most of my 20s determined that I would not be a public school teacher. So after graduating from college, I spent two years working at a nonprofit. I was serving newly arrived immigrant and refugee children and doing my best to help them learn the English that they and their families needed to know in order to survive here in their new home. Though it took a bit longer than I now like to admit, the weight of this reality eventually led me to the understanding that while it's fine to be well-intentioned, that only goes so far when it comes to measurably impacting people's lives. They needed and deserved for me to be a qualified professional educator. In fact, all students need and deserve qualified professional educators. This truth is what motivated me to seek my master's in education and is ultimately what has led me here today. Unfortunately, there is another truth that we must also acknowledge. More and more of my colleagues are leaving than ever before, and there's not enough people coming to replace them. This will not change until we do something to make this a sustainable profession. And we must all do everything in our power to ensure that this happens because all students need and deserve qualified professional educators. I stand before this board with the understanding that approximately 60% of the funding for our public schools comes from the North Carolina General Assembly and that around 30% comes from the Board of County Commissioners and that the remaining 10% comes from the federal government. I know that you all are not, generally speaking, a funding body, but ESAR has changed that. ESAR means that you all are now uniquely positioned to be more than well-intentioned in how you respond to the more than 3,000 emails you have received in the past week. With this funding, millions of dollars in funding, you all have the opportunity to make a measurable impact in the lives of every single professional in Guilford County Schools. Not just the admin, not just the new hires, but every single professional, from tech services to custodial services, from transportation to SEL. Every single professional who works day in and day out to ensure that our students get what they need and deserve. All students need and deserve qualified and professional educators. And retention bonuses for all staff are a step toward ensuring that qualified professionals stay in Guilford County Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do for our students. Amy Harrison, followed by Kenya Donaldson. Welcome. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. If you'll begin by saying your name and address.
My name is Amy Harrison. My address is 7385 Wood Springs Drive in Witsit. I'm a teacher at Reedie Fork Elementary. I'd like to speak to you tonight about using ESAR funds to provide bonuses for all Guilford County School employees. As you know, we've been working throughout this pandemic. In March 2020, we had a week to totally switch our classrooms to a virtual setting. Some of us were making sure that students had hot meals daily. Others delivered those meals and provided Wi-Fi on school buses. Others delivered those meals and provided wifi on school buses. Some of us called and visited students, socially distanced, of course. We participated in caravans to visit our students and learned how to engage our students online. We worried about what school would look like in the fall. How would we manage to be safe and still do what was best for our students? How would our students react to wearing masks? Could we be back in person safely? Would we have to teach online and in person at the same time? I know I felt like last year was my first year of teaching all over again. This is your chance to honor all the employees' hard work and dedication to Guilford County Schools. I realize that ESER funds cannot be used for salary increases, but they can be used for bonuses. I was glad to hear that November 22nd and 23rd were, were changed to asynchronous days. This shows that you value the mental health of students and staff. Voting for bonuses for all staff would show that you value our hard work and loyalty to Guilford County Schools. I've always been proud to say that I work for Guilford County. When our board decided to sue the state when they tried to take our due process rights away, when we had the gradual reentry plan, and when we've used science to determine next steps during that pandemic are just a few examples of when I've been so proud to work for Guilford County Schools. Please make tonight another proud moment for us. As always, I thank you for your time tonight and your service to the students, staff and citizens of Guilford County.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for supporting our students and our families. Kenya Donaldson, followed by Shelley Doolin. Welcome, Ms. Donaldson.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Contreras and distinguished members of the board. I'm Kenya Donaldson, GCAE President, resident of Greensboro Wheatfield. I stand on behalf of educators of Guilford County that are making education look easy in the midst of a pandemic. Standing with educators, in our opinion, is also standing with our students. Our students deserve educators who will finish the school year with them. Retention bonuses will slow the number of educators leaving our district during a challenging year. Did you know custodians continue to deep clean buildings even on their, and continue with their regular, um, duties? Did you know teacher assistants might as well wear roller skates to school? Because when they walk in the building, they don't know whether they're subbing, covering, or actually facilitating instruction in their classrooms. Elementary teachers plan lunch during their period, during their planning periods to spread out desks so students could socially engage during lunch and remove their mask. Additionally, they plan small group outdoor learning experiences, novel opportunities for children to continue to engage in small groups safely. Our elementary teachers have invested in lap desks where they can sit outside. They sanitize these at the end of the day so they can be used again day after day. Middle school teachers work just to balance reasonable, appropriate responses when children forget how to wear their mask. Our high school teachers volunteer for additional preps, yes, paid preps, because they know our children deserve qualified individuals in their classrooms. Our children deserve every ounce of this energy, just as our educators deserve recognition for their commitment. Our educators have been told to be grateful for their supplemental raise. And yes, indeed, they are. This increase has come after many years of not receiving one. This raise has provided some reprieve. What we are asking is an ESER retention bonus, a bonus that is an amount over and above wages. Um, this bonus can help stabilize a workforce where we have students who are watching their, uh, teachers and educators and professionals in their buildings leave day to day. Why bonuses? Because our children deserve stable learning environments with low attrition rates. Why bonuses? Because children see hard work being done to bring learning to life during a pandemic. Why bonuses? Because the staff of Guilford County is the labor that continues to make this happen in our buildings. Why bonuses? Because children deserve educators who are recognized for the work they do during this pandemic. Thank you all for your time and consideration today. We look forward to seeing your results of, of your discussion.
Thank you, Kenya. Uh, Shelley Doolin, followed by Jim Morris. Welcome, Ms. Doolin. You have, uh, three minutes to make your comments. Uh, if you'll start by giving us your name and address. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left.
Okay. Good evening. Um, my name is Shelley Doolin, and I live on Elwood Avenue. I live and teach in Chairperson Hayes District. I have been a teacher with Guilford County Schools for eight years, the last five at Peck Elementary School. I'm also a parent of two GCS students. I'm here today to ask the board to consider using ESER funds to provide retention bonuses for staff who are remaining with our district. But first, I'd like to tell you a story. My husband and I have recently been shopping for a car. As we researched new cars, we learned about autonomous driving. To someone who has been driving a base model Subaru from 2009, it's literally like magic. Autonomous driving reduces the number of second by second decisions a driver has to make to stay in their lane, which honestly blew my mind. Pretty cool. Unsurprisingly, I immediately connected this concept with teaching. Successfully navigating the millions of micro decisions we make every second of every minute that we are in our classrooms are what makes teaching both an art and a science. It's not only the lessons themselves, but the infinite number of instantaneous decisions we have to make to not only effectively manage a group of kids, but also ensure that those children are learning and succeeding at their highest potential. Seasoned educators are the autonomous driving vehicles of our schools. But as you are all well aware, nothing about these past two years has allowed any of us to do things as we've always done them. The disruption and trauma of this pandemic has altered the landscape of public education. The truth is autonomous driving only gets us so far. On top of this new reality, we have new curriculum, new technology, new protocols. And we are now under intense pressure to mitigate learning loss by accelerating our instruction. The list goes on and on, and it's all too much for some people to handle. And many educators have decided that this year, enough is enough. It has become too hard for many educators to manage, and many of my colleagues are leaving this profession that we love at an alarming rate. Fortunately, Guilford County is blessed to have a number of educators, myself included, who are managing the challenges of learning in a pandemic. Let me be clear, we want to be here. We love our kids and we have the skills to help them. We are all exhausted, and we should probably talk about why at some point, but I don't think today's the day for that. Um, right now, we find a way, need to find a way to make the experienced educators we already have want to stay. And frankly, we deserve more than accolades and the long overdue county supplement increase for the work educators have done over the last two years. When we see district after district around us reward their staff with bonuses, and we see our own district hand out bonuses to principals and large hiring bonuses for new staff, it directly impacts our morale, and it hurts when we see our sacrifices and hard work aren't celebrated or acknowledged. If we want what is best for our children, then we want the most experienced and skilled educators to stay in Guilford County Schools. A retention bonus is one way to ensure that this happens. Let's please not waste this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being in my district at Peck Elementary. Um, Jim Morris, followed by Kalisha McNair. Welcome, Mr. Morris. As you're approaching the podium, just like to remind you, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. And if you'll start by saying your name and your address.
My name is James Morris. Address is 7707 Cedar Chase Drive, Greensboro.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I want to talk about mask mandates. I want to say it's, seems very Marie Antoinette-ish of us to force our kids to wear masks while we adults go around to sport events, concerts, and in stores with no mask or improper usage of cloth instead of N95 masks. Kids are so scared, and these mandates have caused anxiety, fear and depression. For what? Well, let's go over the stats. These are from the Guilford COVID Dashboard and the CDC. Currently, we're at 68% partially vaxxed, 79% 12 or older. We've been hovering around 4% positivity for at least the last three weeks. Is, to my knowledge, I have three girls in middle, elementary and high school of Northern. There's been no outbreaks or transmissions between students and teachers. Seventeen and younger deaths out of a total of 576 for the entire country shown January 1st of 20 to 11/21 of this year. Averages, if you put it per state, at about six per state, and that can fluctuate depending on the state's actual numbers, which I don't have. But flu deaths are way more. Uh, there's no mask mandates for flu, no testing for flu. The numbers between 2017 and 2018, under 17, was 11 deaths in North Carolina, but no mandates for any of that. So I'm hoping we can move forward and follow the, uh, hopefully the county will drop it also, and we can go with that. Next, I'd like to talk about maps. Did the board approve map F?
No.
No, okay. Uh, with that, the map F was approved by the Guilford County Commissioners on November 4th. Uh, that was a, I think a six to one. It was a compromise. Many people put into this. Many people compromised. Uh, Commissioner Alston said, "Nobody's getting everything they want." And we all understand that. We all have to work together in this county. Conservatives, Democrats, liberals, any way you, independents. But it, if it is not chosen, it'll be blatantly obvious that this is an, this is an attempt to silence the most vocal critics on the board of board policies by forcing them into other districts, thereby disallowing them to run again. If you don't go along with Chairman Alston and the board's yes vote on map F, we will have to appeal to our state legislators to look into unfair redistricting practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Kalisha McNair, followed by Elizabeth Nichols. Ms. McNair, as you're approaching the podium, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. And if you will, um, begin by giving us your name and address. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kalisha McNair, and I live at 1903 Green Market Court, Greensboro, North Carolina. I've been teaching for almost 17 years in Guilford County. And GCS competes for teachers against districts like Wake, Durham, Mecklenburg and Forsyth Counties. The district also competes against neighboring Rockingham and Alamance Counties. We have watched school administrators receive very public bonuses awarded through ESER funds. Bonuses up to 30,000 have been used to provide incentive, incentives, I'm sorry, for the new hires in our district, which I spoke very positively about to the press. The greatest majority of our loyal staff who remain committed to GCS have not yet received any bonuses whatsoever. My colleagues have answered the increasing demands of what it means to work during a COVID pandemic. Nine local schools districts, all within driving distance of Guilford County, are giving their staff retention bonuses up to $5,000, be a part of helping our staff feel appreciated and needed in our district. I remember reading a quote from Dr. Oatley saying, "Everybody needs good, good teachers, and so it's a competition every year, not just during a year that's unique like this one." So if our administrators feel this way, why not boost the morale of so many hardworking, dedicated Guilford County School employees and see what we are rewarded with the bonuses that show our worth? I've supported many decisions made from this administration because I believe in success for all. Will you back up your employees with retention bonuses that reflect the success we are giving to all our students? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your contributions to this district. Um, Chuck Winfrey, followed by Michael Logan. I'm sorry, Elizabeth Nichols, followed by Chuck Winfrey. Thank, that's Chuck Winfrey?
Yes.
All right, followed by Michael Logan. Great, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Hayes and members of the board.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Chuck Winfrey, and my law office is at 100 South Elm Street here in Greensboro. I want to express my concern about reports in the media that you are considering adopting a set of district lines that do not match the district lines adopted by the Board of Commissioners last week. Uh, this is apparently despite your resolution a few weeks ago to adopt those in principle. Uh, for at least 30 years, the Commissioner districts in Guilford County and the Board of Education districts in Guilford County mirrored each other. As a former county commissioner, I can tell you that that helped establish communications uh, and a working relationship between the respective members of the boards. And I assume that has also been your experience. Uh, at this point, it seems that you have two choices. Uh, one is to adopt the district boundaries that have already been vetted and adopted with bipartisan support by the Board of Commissioners. Or two, engage in a time-consuming and expensive map drawing exercise, being careful to adhere to the many legal requirements of such districts. Uh, though option two, drawing your own maps allows you to help your political friends and target your political adversaries, it also increases the difficulties of administering the election. Because of the impending deadline of November 19, also, uh, to establish those districts, you would not receive any meaningful, uh, public comment on any proposed districts. This course of action would ill serve Guilford County and would invite legislative and perhaps judicial intervention. Please do yourselves and Guilford County a favor and resist the temptation to engage in an unseemly map drawing exercise. Instead, adopt the county commissioner districts as your own. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michael Logan, followed by Freddie Lewis. Mr. Logan, thank you. Um, as you approach the podium, um, just a reminder that you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. If you'll begin by saying your name and address.
Right, thank you. My name is Michael Logan. I live at 5202 Rambling Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing me a chance to speak here at the board. I share my address, excuse me. I share my address, and it may behoove some of the members of the school board to share theirs. Since the county commissioners, in appearance of previously drawn maps, seem to have misplaced some board members while noting where others lived. As an educator, I am here to bring attention to several ongoing things in the school system. One is, I would like to say thank you. You have provided a stipend to the teachers covering classes, and teachers are covering a whole lot of classes, and teachers feel appreciated in that. All right. As the budget talks of a bonus, is, if it is awarded, I would like the board to take into consideration two situations last year as an educator. Most educators either went into work, did their work at the school, ran their classes from the school, and in some cases, a lot of educators did it from their home. My biggest expense last year was going to work every day. Some educators sat at home, did all their work from home. Now, I will tell you, as a 25-year educator, the schools last year were the cleanest I have ever seen them. We had bus drivers clean them. We had the maintenance. It, they were clean, spotless. Teachers should have been at the school. And part of the reason teachers should have been in, at the school is there were other things going outside of school. There were, there were teachers that were teaching from the beach. They were teaching from extended vacations. They were not in the schools. Now, this is applying to the high school because we brought in the younger level kids early in the year. And I applaud the school board for doing that. And as the school board pushed for more grade levels to come in, there was a pushback. And that pushback wasn't from the parents. It wasn't from the students. It was from a group that provided apples at the voting booth. Now, those apples came from a teacher organization that is a political organization. And that was not fair. That was not fair to our students. They did not follow their guidelines in supporting educators or supporting the students. And you were here tonight from them asking for extending the mask mandate. We need to stop this. It should be optional for the students and for the staff.
Thank you. And thank you for your job as an educator.
Thank you. Y'all do have a very hard job.
Freddie Lewis, followed by Melanie Gada. Welcome. You have three minutes to speak, and when you see the amber light, you have 15 seconds left. If you'll begin left. If you'll begin by saying your name and address.
All right, thank you. My name is Freddie Lewis. I'm a teacher at Eastern Guilford High School. I live at 3819 Waynoca Drive. My wife and I both are teachers. My daughter goes to Grimsley. I want to start by thanking all of you for all the hard work and careful deliberation toward trying to keep students and staff safe during this pandemic. I know this has been a trying year and a half for you, as well as all the school employees and students. I also want to recognize and thank you for your work toward giving school employees raises, especially for our classified staff who are asked to do so much for so little. I'm here to talk about the crisis in morale that is infecting the district. The last year and a half has been absolutely exhausting. We have gone almost four years without a budget. Teachers have been asked to build a plane while it is in the air. We have worked long hours while constantly worrying about the safety of our students, our families, and ourselves. We have endured bus driver shortages, cafeteria shortages, and maybe most of all, substitute shortages. Teachers are losing their planning time while we try to take care of our colleagues' classes when they are absent. At my school, we've never had enough subs. This was true before COVID, and is now critical. I appreciate the fact that the district has finally decided to start paying us for the coverage we do, but this is not a long-term solution. We are tired. It is not just the demands we face in the building. During the heights of the pandemic, this district offered impressively large signing bonuses for teachers to come here. That left us asking, "What about the teachers already here?" In the end, we sucked it up, gritted our teeth, and kept teaching. We were called contract employees in public meetings, but we sucked it up and kept teaching. We then heard about Randolph County offering a $5,000 bonus, but we sucked it up and kept teaching. Now we are hearing about our school districts all over the state giving bonuses. I'm sure if this school district fails to give us a bonus, most of us will suck it up and keep teaching. But what cost to our morale? I say that teachers suck it up and keep teaching, but that's not always true. Since we first went out on March 13th, 2020, my school has lost 16 teachers. Two teachers stayed in the district, but 14 of them just left. They either took an early retirement, left teaching altogether, or left the district for greener pastures. That many people leaving is a symptom of poor morale. And it's not just the teachers that left that are fed up. We all feel underpaid and overworked, we feel left behind, and it's not your fault that the General Assembly has failed to produce a budget. But every teacher that leaves is another teacher's class to cover. It's another planning period lost, it's another class disrupted, it's also further evidence of the thought in every teacher's mind, "Maybe I should leave too." There are so many things beyond this Board's control, and I'm here to ask you for something that is. Please show us the same appreciation that teachers in other districts are receiving. Don't you think school employees in Guilford Counties deserve a bonus too? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being a part of this district and supporting our children.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As Melanie Gata, okay. As Chrissy Smith comes, I would just, Board Member McGregor reminded me that we did pass a policy in July limiting public comments to 30 minutes, so we have exceeded that. Jill, I don't know if we need a motion to allow, to extend that time, or if we can just agree.
You can do it however y'all want to do it, as long as you make it clear you don't have to have a motion to waive your policy, but you certainly can.
Is everyone okay with continuing?
Yeah, and I did not request that we limit it.
No, you didn't. You just reminded me that we had a-
We were having a general discussion, because we had been criticized previously for allowing people to speak. We have never limited to the 30 minutes, and so.
So is there anyone that objects to allowing all of the speakers on the, that have signed up to speak? All right, thank you. Chrissy Smith, followed by Susan Tysinger. And Ms. Smith, as you're approaching the podium, you have three minutes to make your comments, and when the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. So if you'll begin by saying your name and address.
Okay. My name is Chrissy Smith, and I live at 19 Cedar Branch, and I work at Guilford Tech. So I see the product of education from Guilford County schools. And I first just want to say what a pleasant man it is in the parking lot who is addressing everybody. But for parents who have not seen this administrative building, I had to show my driver's license and come through a metal detector in order to get here, so I wonder what happens to your child at school. But I teach health and PE, and I advocate for health and healthy eating and exercise, but none of those things are considered healthy anymore. It's considered healthy for you to get a shot and for you to wear a mask. We are even subjugating our children through Sesame Street with Big Bird telling the kids that they even need to get a shot in order to be healthy, to prevent their friends and family from dying. So what kind of message is that to send to a child whenever you are not talking about healthy eating or exercise on a show such as that? And when I look at these packed stadiums and nobody is wearing a mask, how does that make you feel when you send your child to school and they have to wear one for eight and 10 hours a day? And as a health and PE teacher, I have to wear one to work out, and it is soaked in sweat, and I can probably change mine, or I can go to my office and take it off. But how many of my students leave my class with that soaked rag on their face that is full of bacteria that is probably going to cause them health problems later on, such as sinus infections, bronchial issues, and other problems that are related to their respiratory health? And I just want to ask you guys, we as humanity are sent here to love, we are sent here to be creative, and we are sent to be of service to others. And we have failed our children because we are too busy working and we take the parents out of the home, and in order to put food on the table and a roof over their head, some of them are working two jobs. And our children are left to their own devices, and our parents are being distracted with their cell phones or having to work. We are failing our children, we are teaching them not to be critical thinkers, but rather to comply. And I pray for everybody that is on this Board, that you make decisions that are in the best interest of our children and the best interest of these parents, because ultimately they are responsible for their child's education, not the government. Thank you, and God bless you.
I'm so sorry, thank you. Susan Tysinger, followed by Catherine Edwards. Ms. Tysinger, as you approach the Board. You have three minutes to make your comments when the amber light comes on. You have 15 seconds left, and if you'll begin by saying your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Susan Tysinger, and I live in Greensboro. And here I am again. A bit of background, I'm the daughter of teachers. My father was a principal and a superintendent. I taught school for nine years in Greensboro City Schools, stopped to raise a family, but have been volunteering in our schools since 1979 without a break. So I do think I have some valid things to say. I'm here as a member representing Take Back Our Schools, representing the families of our community. I'm not here for myself. My children are long out of the system, and my grandchildren are in private school, as the schools are in such disarray that their parents couldn't afford to fail them by sending them to public school. I'm here about questionable decisions you have made, many that are unethical. I'm not an attorney, so for now, I stop short of saying illegal. What are we to believe? You said you were going to follow the redistricting plan those county commissioners voted on, but now you're not. You turn a death fear when parents ask you about CRT. You disguise it as SEL, saying you're not teaching CRT, yet SEL is all over your website. Parents in this community send their children, their nearest and dearest to you, to educate, not indoctrinate. And with test scores in the basement even before the shutdown, we all see that that is not happening. Our precious children and teachers are breathing in carbon dioxide all day while most of you are somewhere in an office maskless. You're telling kids they should get the shot, even though you know many parents feel it's not safe. And parents should be the one making that decision, not you. You've given the superintendent almost total control over our tax dollars, dollars that are supposed to be used to help educate our students. And then you turn around and ask us for more. And we are to trust you that our money will be spent appropriately? Could you just redirect your attention away from your personal agendas by educating and preparing our students for a successful future? At the rate GCS is going, there will be very few future mechanics, doctors, teachers, CEOs, and plumbers among our graduates. And many of those will have diplomas that really don't reflect a valid education. We'll have a pile of folks who blame their failures on everyone and everything except themselves. They'll not learn the buck stops here, as it should here with you. Thank you.
Catherine Edwards, followed by John Moyle. Ms. Edwards, as you approach the podium, just a reminder, you have three minutes to make your comments. When you see the amber light, you have 15 seconds left, and if you'll begin by saying your name and address. Welcome.
My name is Catherine Edwards. I live in the Westwood neighborhood here in Greensboro. I'm a lifelong Guilford County resident. I attended Greensboro City Schools, as it was called then, and all three of my children have attended Guilford County schools. I've had concerns about how our district's being led and managed for several years, but have never been led to come and speak until today. The Guilford County School Board members established policies that govern our school system, including its curriculum, facilities, financial resources, and personnel. The Board evaluates the district's achievement and monitors its progress, making sure that goals are met. It's your job to hold our superintendent accountable. Accountability and conflict interest. The superintendent sits on the Board of an organization that's led by your vice chair. My question is, is it hard to hold the superintendent accountable for meeting goals and objectives in this community on behalf of our students and teachers as she sits on your Board? The Board Chair said, your Board Chair said this in January, "The distance that exists between people in modern times and those living during the times of slavery and Jim Crowe does not mean white people don't have a responsibility to act. You don't get off because you didn't do it. You are tied to things, to things that were done in your name. Racism robs white people of humanity because of the things that have been done in their name." She's your Board Chair. Is that the consensus of this Board? Is that what all of you believe? This is an extremely divisive statement, and it puts into question whether your chair and this Board truly have the best interest of all students in mind as you take, as you make decisions that directly impact them. That is what you're here for, right? For the interest of all students and all teachers. From my perspective, you are continuing to use COVID as a way to control and organize. As your Chair also said in January, organizing is building a base of power sufficient to challenge existing power. Your Chair emphatically denied that what everyone is referring to as CRT is being taught in Guilford County, which is great, that's a relief. However, suggestions and recommendations for teachers to attend the Racial Equity Institute, which is run by your Board Chair, I guess would not be considered a conflict of interest or a move to frame the curriculum within Guilford County and the discussions in the classroom around a social justice ideology or philosophy. The citizens of Guilford County are organizing as well. We elect this Board, you report to us, not the superintendent, and quite frankly, not to the Board Chair.
Thank you. John Moyle, followed by Joanne Pendleton. John Moyle's not here. Joanne Pendleton, followed by Stephanie Mitchell. Welcome, Ms. Pendleton, as you approach the podium. I just want to remind you, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. So if you'll begin by saying your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joanna Pendleton. I live at 4003 Coltswood Drive in Greensboro. I'm a parent of three GCS students, and I'm also the librarian at Brightwood Elementary School. First, I wanted to thank the Board of Education for your support of teachers last spring, when we as educators and Board members and district leadership came together to demand the funding that we needed from our Board of County Commissioners. Our commissioners, many of whom we worked together to elect, came through for us. Our classified staff received bonuses to get them up to $15 an hour, and certified staff received an increased local supplement. Those are wins, and we celebrate them with you. We also recognize that the largest part of the work remains in moving our state legislature to fully fund our public schools. Anything we do locally is just a stopgap to make up for what our state is robbing from our schools every day that they refuse to pass a budget. But I'm here with my colleagues tonight to also let you know that we know there are local funds in play as well, from federal ESAR funding. We have seen school boards in Alamance, Davidson, Randolph, Rockingham, and Winston-Salem-Forsyth grant the ESAR bonuses to their staff, ranging from $1,700 to $5,000. And that's just a sample of the counties nearest to us. We've heard our principals and district administration tell us today that our district should not be providing bonuses along with supplement raises we won last year. But you've also heard us telling you that we need it. Our people are burned out and leaving. A lot of my colleagues have talked about this. A retention bonus is not going to fix the whole problem, but it will help stop the bleeding, and you heard it to the tune of over 3,000 emails in less than a week. I think I've said what I need to say about bonuses at this point, because my colleagues before me have also shared very eloquently, and I'd like to end my comments by thanking the Board for keeping our students' safety as a top priority. I would like to request that you vote to keep our masking mandate in place for now, since we are still in a pandemic and entering flu season as well, and we already have an extreme shortage of staff and subs. And thank you also for supporting our call as teachers to teach truth to our students and to provide them with information consistent with that truth. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, and thank you for supporting our district. Stephanie Mitchell, followed by Sheri Pickett. Ms. Mitchell, as you approach the podium, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. If you'll begin by saying your name and address.
Somebody left their mask.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Mitchell, and I live in Greensboro. I am here tonight proudly representing Take Back Our Schools GCS. Take Back Our Schools is a movement taking place across our country. We are not just a group of concerned citizens, but parents of students made up of various ethnic groups and backgrounds, who have come together to make our schools safe physically and emotionally. We want what is best for all students, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria staff, secretaries, guidance counselors, administrators, SROs, and all employees. We believe that every student deserves a great education free of violence, harassment, and racism. Although it is disappointing that our group had to form in the first place, it has been my honor to help hundreds of parents and staff members who come to us because they feel belittled and shut out by all of you. I will give you a few examples of what I've recently had to deal with. When teachers and other staff have legitimate complaints and fear your retribution, they come to us. Why? When a student was given a COVID shot instead of the COVID test, they came to us. Why? When CRT is not being taught in GCS, yet staff come to us with proof showing that it is. When you vote to require children to wear a piece of cloth from Hobby Lobby over their faces for seven-plus hours a day, refusing many medical exemptions written by physicians, hearing horror stories about children experiencing bacterial rashes and having to wear masks that have been contaminated by body fluids, yet Board members who voted to keep children in masks post-maskless photos on social media while inside local businesses during a county-wide mask mandate, people come to us. When violence on a campus, weapons, when violence and on-campus weapons are very real threat in many of our schools, parents and staff fearful of their child's and their own safety and concerned about learning environments, they come to ask, "Why are they coming to us and not to you guys? I can't fix any of this. We first brought issues to you four years ago, yet we are here today with those same issues. We told you then how to fix things, and when I walked through the doors, I see you took my advice for yourselves, but you didn't take it from my kid, who's been diagnosed with PTSD. Went to school this morning to find police officers on campus, and she didn't want to get out of her car. You're not doing your jobs. We are going to keep doing what we're doing, we're going to keep posting the truth, I'm going to keep calling it out until you do what we ask you to do, and that's fix it."
Thank you. Sheri Pickett, followed by Gail Dunham. And Ms. Pickett, as you- And Ms. Pickett, as you approach the podium, just a reminder, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. You'll begin by saying your name and address.
Okay. Sherri Pickett, 7804 Robinson Road in Summerfield, and I am part of Take Back Our Schools. At the July 13th School Board Meeting, I know it's been a while. Chairwoman Hayes mentioned one sentence that Thomas Jefferson had wrote in a 200-page Notes of the State of Virginia in 1781, and I'll repeat it. "I advance it as a suspicion only that the blacks are inferior to the whites in the endowments both of body and mind." This statement was more of an observation, because now I will tell you more of the truth. Jefferson's dealings with black people at this time had been with slaves who were denied an education. He later wrote in these same notes where he made this statement. He said, "It was impossible for doubt to have been more tenderly or hesitantly expressed than what was in the Notes of Virginia, and nothing was or is farther from my intentions than to enlist myself as the champion of a fixed opinion where I have only expressed doubt." In these Notes of Virginia, Jefferson journaled observations such as the inhabitants, rivers, land, the money being used, the laws. And he also wrote about a plant that was discovered in Virginia to help keep the Native Americans warm at night during cold winters. In the early 1770s, the American colonies could not pass antislavery laws as long as they remained part of the British colonies because the King of Britain struck them down. As the separation from Great Britain was looming closer, Jefferson wrote a provision in the state constitution for Virginia, Constitution for Virginia, that no person coming into the country shall be held in slavery under any circumstance. Thomas Jefferson fought to abolish slavery up until his death in 1826. Black abolitionist Frederick Douglass often invoked Jefferson to assist in their efforts. At a speech in Virginia, Douglass said these words. "Jefferson was not ashamed to call black men his brother or to address them as gentlemen." And he also said, "It was your own Thomas Jefferson that taught me that all men are created equal." And I just wanted to end with this short quote of Desmond Tutu. "Forgiveness is simply about understanding that every one of us is both inherently good and inherently flawed. Within every hopeless situation and every seemingly hopeless person lies the possibility of transformation."
Thank you. And our last speaker is Gail Dunham. Welcome, Ms. Dunham. And as you approach the podium, just a reminder, you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you will have 15 seconds left.
Good evening, Gail Dunham. 5805 Snow Hill Drive in Summerfield, North Carolina. Thank you very much for, for your service, for your work. Thank you for listening to everyone tonight. I just gave a business card, and they said the secretary would make sure that each of you have that. I served on a school board in Illinois. We were the fastest-growing district in the whole United States. We'd passed huge referendums, and we passed them all because we told people the truth. Told people we needed the tax increase for the education fund to staff the buildings, and we told them exactly what schools we would build and where, and we knew what they would cost. And we were highly effective, we were respected because, because of that. I wish you all the best of luck. My primary concern tonight, I'd like to know who decided that canceling school, classroom learning for Thanksgiving week was a good idea? Giving you my business card, if anyone thinks that, that telling children to stay home and see how they could, they figure out on the internet on their own without a classroom teacher. I'd like to talk to anyone who thinks that that's an effective way to learn. The kids, you've all been through so much with COVID. I know that you're trying hard. The laws require that we meet the needs of all the students, and that makes your job just that much more challenging. But please, do not cancel classroom learning and think that staying home and being on the internet for two days and trying to teach the kids themselves is going to replace the classroom. And, and I think that the teachers also, I think the teachers also felt they need the classroom time to try and teach all this information. Who, please don't make this decision again. Call me, we'll talk about it. But who made that decision? I don't know what the thinking was behind it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to recognize, we have House of Representatives member Amos Quick, former board member and vice chair of this board. And if, if it's okay with the board, he would like to make some comments. And since we've allowed other folks to speak that were on the list and to extend our 30 minutes, if there's anyone that objects to that, please let me know. All right, welcome Representative Quick, Reverend Amos Quick. Welcome, good to see you.
Good evening, good to see you all. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Just wanted to provide some update. I heard several of the speakers. I'm Amos Quick, I live at 529 Fox Ridge Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. I heard several of the speakers refer to the state budget. And as they alluded to, it is not your fault that the state doesn't have a budget yet. Just want to provide you with the latest up-to-date information that I have as a House Democratic whip this afternoon, is that perhaps in the next week to 10 days, we will be voting on a state budget. Hopefully that holds true. And there are some good things in the budget that will, will address some of the issues that you all have heard about. So let's keep our fingers crossed that that comes to bear, and that we'll have a state budget, and that budget will include hopefully some teacher pay increases. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Representative Quick. All right, we are now at the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at the consent agenda. I did not receive any correspondence from anyone that there was any questions about anything. Linda?
I just want some information on C, a little more detail as to what those big projects look like.
Okay, we will pull C from the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like you to pull C too, because I think they could use a little more information to make this work better.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
There's a second? Yes. Dr. Contreras?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes, and I just want to make sure which item was pulled?
C.
C.
Item C.
Includes A, approval of October meeting minutes, B, personnel report, D, school improvement plans, E, transportation call center, F, contractual agreement for the chiller replacement project at Welborn Academy of Science and Technology, G, contractual agreement with the Guilford County Health Department of Health and Human Services for the provision of five school nurses for the 2021-2022 school year, H, the new teacher center contract 2021-2022 addendum, and I, the English Language Interpreter Services Contract for 2021-2022. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
All right, there was a motion and second. Please vote using your electronic voting method. All right, that passes unanimously. We're now at item C, Ms. Welborn.
Well, there's simply some high-level.
Can you turn your mic on?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
There's some high-level dollars with not a lot of explanation as to how those dollars, I see, school nutrition, but I think we should explain how that, what we're using that for and down the line.
So here's what, I, I'm taking slightly different. I think you should have that information, it's a good idea. The way that these funds work makes this whole process kind of cumbersome for the staff in that when the money gets released, there's a certain window to apply for the funds. And so sometimes the money might be released and the contract that might be involved is $19,000 or $30,000. But there's an assurance box that the staff is required to indicate that the board has approved the funds. So I think it would behoove us all so that we don't have to meet more often than is necessary to access these funds because we have to have them spent, as you know, in a fairly short window. And we don't want to miss those windows. For you to set up some process, and I think Angie and Whitney can help with it, but some kind of process where you know what the budget includes and authorize the staff to enter into contracts and apply for funds, and then provide it and report to the full board as soon as the funds have been applied for. So that rather than having to meet and vote every single time, you know, if you have a $20,000 contract for cleaning equipment, you don't have to get together in order for them to hit the button to access those funds when they're released by the state. So I was hoping that we could look at sort of big categories and, and come up with a system of approval of the concept of the budget and then reporting when those items have been applied for. Because I think it's going to be, otherwise, I think you're going to be meeting more than you want to.
Yeah, so these, what, what is included here? These are applications that we have to submit when we get allocations of ESSR dollars. So we've been getting those from the state. You know, we got the big ESSR II and ESSR III application that we submitted last year and brought to the board during the budget amendment process. And we continue to get these smaller ones. And, and typically, when we get these, we have a very short turnaround time to get the application submitted to DPI of how we want to spend these dollars. The, the timing of how this works is DPI tells us that we have this allocation. It usually is shortly after a, a state Board of Education meeting where they've approved whatever formula they're going to use to allocate these dollars to the district. They, they give the district notification that we're going, that we've got this, this allocation, and then we're directed to enter an application into the CCIP, the budgeting, the application system that they've got. Typically, it's a very short turnaround. At the same time that we're doing that, we have to submit a budget for that. But the budget doesn't get entered into our budget until follow, until after all of this process is complete. So the application that Jill mentioned, where we do have to check the box to say the board has authorized us to make the application. It's not necessarily saying the board has approved the application or approved the budget because that comes when we get the budget entered into our system, and it comes to you through a budget amendment. So these dollars that you see here are small ESSR funds that have, have been allocated to Guilford County Schools. We've had a very short turnaround to get these, the applications in. And what we're asking for is approval to submit these applications, plus any additional applications that come in with the same short turnaround time, knowing that we're going to bring you the budget as part of the budget amendment process when, once that, once we get to that next step in the application. So for these, school nutrition is, is, it's intended to give retention and recruitment incentives to school nutrition staff. That's the purpose of what you see here is PRC 174. The Summer Bridge Academy. Dr. Oakley may have to provide more information on exactly what that is, but I'm assuming it's something very similar to what we did this past summer and what we've done with the REED to Achieve Every Summer with those dollars. The summer.
It, it applies to transition, so sixth and ninth grade. It's specific to transition years, this particular pot.
The Summer Career Accelerator Program.
That's to include, to increase the number of CTE students create, completing career pathway credentials during summer months.
And so then you see the other three are smaller amounts, well, the homeless funds, smaller amount, but it's similar to what we get with our McKinney-Vento dollars. And then the last two are for, specifically for our exceptional children. And again, these are the ones that we've got to submit now, but then as we move forward, there's going to be more with the short turnaround because the state's got a deadline of how quickly they have to get these allocated to schools. And they are getting close to some of those, meeting some of those deadlines.
And the categories are determined by staff that this is what?
No. The state tells us.
The state determines the category? Like EC?
Yes, these are very, these come to us very specific.
Well, that was one of the questions I had, is, you know, was this the state? Or is this, so this is the state saying, I'm going to give you so much money for nutrition?
That's right.
And, okay. All right. That helps out a lot.
So could we include in C? Because I think the language in the recommendation attempts to do what I'm talking about, but I would include a little more language to just say including but not limited to, so that we can continue to authorize staff to make these applications without constantly coming back in and approving another slate of six things every time they release the certain categories of funds.
But we would get a report.
And you can ask for whatever report you want, but we need to keep the train moving.
Every single one of these will come through a budget amendment.
All right, is there a motion?
To approve as amended.
To approve as amended? I'm sorry, Kim, you did have a question.
The way these funds are coming in. The way these funds are coming in, is it any different, like when you got the Race to the Top Grant? Like, have you done this before?
Right, so this is very different than the Race to the Top Grant because the Race to the Top Grant came, we, we did, submitted an application directly to the Department of Education for that. There, we did have some Race to the Top dollars come to us through the state the way these are. But these are dollars that are coming, that are kind of allocated to the state, and then the state has to come up with a formula on how to distribute those to every school district in the state. And that's how these are coming to us. And that's why they're for the very specific purpose that, that they're giving them to us for.
But we've done this, this board has done this before, this process.
Right, we just, we've never had, I mean, we always had federal grants that have come to us this way. You know, Title I, IDEA, all those others. We've just never had this volume coming in this quickly and needing to get it turned around on the way we have with the ESSR funds right now.
So move to approve.
Winston moved to approve, there's a second. All, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We are now at, excuse me, I think my comments. I was just trying to get to the agenda. Good evening and welcome. The Guilford County Division of Public Health will host a COVID-19 Vaccination Clinic on the Dudley High Campus on Saturday, November 20. From 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, the clinic will offer the low-dose Pfizer vaccine that has been approved for children ages 5 to 11. Appointments are also available November 13th and 14th at the Greensboro Coliseum. Parents should schedule an appointment online through GuilfordVaccination.com or by calling 336-641-7944. A similar clinic was held on Saturday at Andrews High School. Today and tomorrow, Guilford County Schools is joining in the city of Greensboro's Virtual Minority and Women Enterprise Development Week, also known as MED Week. A networking event is happening tonight, and tomorrow's a full day of business development presentations for minority and women-owned businesses. We are proud to be a partner of the event. Learn more at www greensboro-nc.gov. November is National Family Engagement Month, a time to raise awareness and celebrate family's important role in the education and well-being of their children. The Guilford Parent Academy provides resources and interactive workshops to assist families in helping their students in the journey of academic success. Finally, Guilford Parent Academy is celebrating the season of giving, by giving away five $100 gift cards to deserving families. Visit the Parent Academy website to nominate a Guilford County Schools family who would be blessed by an extra $100 this holiday season. Nominations will be accepted through November 19, and winners will be announced on December 10. We would like to thank the Cleveland Elam Foundation for providing the funding for this initiative. And this concludes my remarks. We are now at the superintendent reports. Dr. Contreras?
Good evening. Thursday is Veterans Day, and I am proud to honor those who have served our country in the military, including our own Pat Hillman. We know that freedom isn't free. We know that freedom isn't free, and we are thankful to those who protect our freedoms and those of others around the world. Guilford County Schools has announced the schedule for the 2022 graduation ceremonies. GCS will host 31 graduation ceremonies beginning in late May. Ceremonies will primarily take place in the Greensboro Coliseum's Field House and Special Events Center. Visit our website for a complete schedule. This week is National School Psychology Week, and I'm proud to recognize our more than 50 school psychologists who provide a wide range of valuable services to our children. They assist children in crisis, support classroom management strategies, and provide group and individual counseling. They have a tremendously important role in our schools as we continue to focus on the mental health of our students and staff. And speaking of mental health, I'd like to remind families that our youth crisis hotline is still in operation seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to midnight. Students who are struggling with anxiety, depression, abuse, or other trauma are encouraged to call the hotline and speak with a trained counselor. The number to call is 336-332-7295. That's 336-332-7295. Next week is American Education Week, and we join the nation in honoring specific types of educators who often go unrecognized, including education support professionals and substitute teachers. Lift up the GCS educators and join in the conversation on our social media channels at GC Schools NC. Finally, tonight, I'd like to remind our families that we will use the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week as a time to make up schoolwork before the finals week, final weeks of the semester. These two remote learning days are an opportunity to use our allotted instructional time in ways that benefit students and staff, many of whom have expressed their need for a more flexible schedule. We hope all families can enjoy being together and reflecting on the things for which they are truly thankful. I wish all of our employees, families, and board members a very happy Thanksgiving. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Contreras. We are now at an action item. I will also turn to Dr. Contreras to present a recommendation on our monthly requirement regarding universal face covering and mask.
And I will again turn to legal counsel to explain the monthly requirement, state law.
Yes, board members, as you'll recall, the North Carolina Legislature passed a legal requirement that each board reconsider their mask policy at least once a month. And so we have placed this on our regular agenda to comply with that requirement.
Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
What's your, your motion is to continue the face covering based on the recommendation?
That's correct.
Anita?
Just curious, the commissioners are voting, I think, or said they wouldn't have an announcement of some kind, I think on Monday, about the countywide mask mandate. We won't be meeting again, we're not scheduled to be meeting again in November. If they release, and it may not change the vote of this board at all, but if they release the countywide or cease the countywide mask mandate, what kind of position does that put us in?
It doesn't affect you in any way. Most of the places where there are school systems do not have countywide mask mandates. There are only mask mandates countywide in a few counties in North Carolina, and most school systems still have mask mandates, so they're not necessarily linked. Because the theory was that children, especially 5 through 11, were not even eligible for vaccines. And so that was considered to be different than whether businesses or restaurants required a mask.
I know that several of our surrounding counties have gone, we don't have the option until the commissioners release their mandate anyway, but I know that several of our surrounding counties have gone to an optional mask. And the way I'm seeing this, until the commissioners change the countywide, we couldn't possibly do that, could we?
Correct.
Pat?
Yeah, I know we've had, this is an ongoing debate and, you know, we talk about data-driven. And so just, for folks that don't know, across the world, in United Kingdom, France, Italy, Netherlands, Switzerland, Germany, many of those schools have gone to mask optional. And according to the World Health Organization, they're even at odds with the CDC. But just in September, the headline from the CDC, "Schools with Mask Mandates Did Not See Statistically Significant Different Rates of COVID Transmission From Schools With Optional Policies." So if we're going to look at science, if we're going to look at real data, then let's do that. And I've been consistent on this issue from the beginning. I think Guilford County is certainly one of the larger school districts that was able to get back in person. And so I just would appeal to my fellow board members, let's just not think of this mask as muscle memory, as a part of our everyday apparel. And I really, I believe as a parent with kids, I mean, I hear these stories of kids being sent up to the front of the bus for the rest of the year because the mask dipped down below their nose. I mean, this kind of stuff's going on. And I know you hear it as well, and it's just not right. And then I'll read one last quote from this same resource. I'm happy to send this link out. Don't take, don't take my word for it. That, the World Health Organizations, whose child masking guidance is substantially different from the CDC's recommendations, have explicitly recognized that the decision to mask students carries with it potential academic and social harms for children and may lack a clear benefit. And I quote, "may lack a clear benefit." So I'm going to side with, with data, have all along. And so I would just appeal to my fellow board members, let's refrain from maybe the, maybe the auto response of just keeping a mask on when we see that the data is out there across the world. We see it, and there's no significant link of outbreaks. And so I'll be supporting mask optional tonight and for the foreseeable future unless something drastic changes. And I'll continue to look at the science and judge the data for what it is.
And just to remind board members, the requirement to wear masks on buses is a federal requirement, not a local or a school board requirement.
Anita?
Well, in light of what Jill just said, I'm going to make a substitute motion that if the commissioners drop the countywide mask mandate, we move to mask optional.
Second.
All right, please vote. And that fails by a vote of five to four. Right? I'm sorry, Diane? So the first motion is, is to follow the recommendation by the district that we will continue to require the use of cloth and fabric face coverings.
You just voted on the substitute.
Right, now we're going to vote on the, the motion that's in the recommendation.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't make auto decisions. I think we need to continue to follow the recommendation, plus students are going to be out for a whole week, so that's going to, you know, put us to almost when we have our next meeting in December, which I think still is giving us time to revisit this if necessary. And then even after we have our meeting, I think students are again, back out again, what, a week and a half, 10 days after we have our meeting? So, you know, it's not like they're going to be in school for real long periods of time, in between these decisions.
So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Deborah?
Just real quick, yeah, this has definitely been a bone of contention in between us, different board members with different thought processes and things like that. I do want to say I have had a number of teachers reach out and ask that we continue the mask mandate, and they are the ones who are inside the classroom with the kids. And also, for myself personally, the reason I would like to continue this for another, another month is to, for children and parents who do want their younger children vaccinated, to give them the opportunity to do that before unmasking.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, we can vote. We have two votes that are not there. Can you reset that? All right, and that motion passes by a vote of six to three. Thank you. We are now at the reconsideration of district boundaries. At our board meeting, we voted philosophically to be in alignment with the county commissioners. And at our retreat, we voted no on a map that was approved by the county commissioners for many board members because we had not had sufficient notice about a map that was not included in the map when we agreed to be in alignment with the county commissioners. And so now is it up for, we are reconsidering the, being in alignment with the county commissioners. And then we will vote on the map after.
I know that we reconsider Saturdays, but on district boundaries.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Second.
There was already a second, but that's okay. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. All right, that passes by a vote of eight to one. Now we need a motion if, on whether or not to adopt Map F, which was adopted by the Guilford County Board of Commissioners.
I'd like to move to adopt Map F that was approved by the county commissioners as the board.
A second?
And to adopt the resolution.
And to adopt the resolution.
Related there too. The resolution that accompanies it.
The second? Thank you. As soon as the board is clear, we will cast our votes. And that passes by a vote of eight to one. We are now at discussion. I'll call on board member Deborah Napper to lead a discussion regarding staff bonuses.
Well, I got to tell you, after the public comments, they kind of stole my thunder. Teachers spoke very well for themselves. First up, let me say thank you to Dr. Contreras because we've had a couple of conversations in the past, past what, week, seven to 10 days, somewhere in there, about the staff bonuses that have been given out so far. Thank you to Angie Henry for talking to me about the raises that we've given to staff, to our teachers and things of that nature. And while talking with these ladies about the raises versus the bonuses, my, my position with it was that I have been a recipient of both, both the raises and the bonuses, you know, recruitment retention also being a big issue in medicine. And I'm concerned because I don't want to see, you know, teaching go into the same cycle that I see where people will, will kind of hop, you know, will, will go for it to, to one place for a bonus, come back for a raise, want to go to another place because they see the benefits and the, the things that are given to, to staff in other facilities or other areas, what have you. And they, they want that recognition, as the teachers mentioned when they were here speaking. I do, I also spoke with Jill, thank you Jill, about the potential for pulling bonus money from the ESSER funds. And I understand the concerns that are behind pulling that money from ESSER. And my conflict with that is that, you know, we, we heard an entire list of counties, every county neighboring us, that has decided to go ahead and pull teacher bonuses from those ESSER funds. So I wonder at our hesitancy with the ESSER funds if everyone else thinks it's safe. Dr. Contreras did put, put forward some alternate suggestions of places where we could potentially pull money for teacher bonuses. I am very, very glad to see that we have already taken into account and applied for the retention recruitment bonuses for nutrition staff because I do think that our classified staff also are deserving as they are just as much in the schools every day. They do just as much student contact. And as was mentioned earlier, the cleaning that they're required to do now, you know, you can see the results of that in the fact that was also mentioned that our students' infection rate is very, very low. So everyone is, is performing at peak. And I think the least we can do is acknowledge that and, and give them a bonus to let them know that their work is quality and they deserve a recompense for that effort. So, and dude, they were not joking about the emails. Somebody out there asked if we had assistance to help us take care of these emails, just for the record, no, we don't. And they were not joking about the sheer volume of emails, everybody with me. So my suggestion tonight is that we vote to request Dr. Contreras and her staff by the next meeting, maybe have a proposal in hand for bonuses for, starting off for our teachers, and then to eventually work in our classified staff. And then, you know, there again, nutrition staff being cared for already there, and a plan and map to pull those funds. Just because I don't want to loop us or close us into a box and say this must come from ESSER or this must come from, you know, small grant, although the idea of applying for a smaller fund if the money, if the ESSER money is offered, definitely has merit. So I've sidetracked myself. Isn't that lovely? Different, different, different suggestions have definitely been put forward on places where we could pull money from to advocate and to give teacher bonuses, to reward our staff for their hard work, and to retain the staff that we have that right now they're, they're holding our core. They really are. And when new staff come and they want to apply and they see that we are holding our positions that we have, we are holding our core strong, and that our teachers want to stay with us, they want to be here, and that we reward them for holding the line for us, that in itself is a recruitment tool, I believe. So, back to the suggestion. I would like to suggest that we vote to request the superintendent and her staff to have a proposal for us by the next meeting with a amount for teacher bonuses, a total bottom line, sourced whatever you see is prudent and best, and a plan to lay that out and some timeline behind it.
So that's a motion, not a recommendation?
Okay, motion.
Can we get a second for discussion?
Well-
All right, we need a second. We have discussion.
Second.
Okay, Anita?
Okay, my question is, who, who are you including in that request? Are you including the custodians? Are you including anyone who has, who is not already scheduled to receive a bonus?
I would like to include everyone, yes. I would like to have teachers made the priority, maybe with teacher bonuses coming first and then as ESSER and things settle out, bonuses for classified staff as they also, like bus drivers and, and nutrition staff. Bus drivers got a bonus last year, we have nutrition staff cared for. We can pull in those extra positions as they come.
Okay, so if your motion includes classified staff, that's clerical, TAs, custodians, then I'm on board. But I don't want it to be so far in the future as they forget what they're getting the bonus for.
Board members, there are really specific limits on what you can do with these funds. It's not just, let's give everybody funds, they have to be tied to future performance, they have to be assigned contracts, there's very specific ways to do this. And so I think not getting in this discussion, trying to guess what the law says and give the staff time to look at it and figure out how to do it, but it's going, it's not just gonna be a bonus, it's gonna be tied to you have been here X time, so therefore you get this bonus in the future, not today. So it's, it's more complicated than it sounds and so I just don't want everybody to start adding pieces to something before the staff has an opportunity to make a proposal.
And I understand that Jill, but I don't want anyone left out.
And that's why I don't want to pigeonhole this into just saying, we need to take a bonus from ESER funds. There, you know, you and I talked and I do, I do understand the concerns behind that and that's why I would like to give time to properly frame this. If we're gonna do it, do it right.
Exactly, that's my point.
Kim and then Pat.
I know that the emails specifically asked us to use ESER funds, but we've already allocated and voted on a budget, am I correct, for the ESER funds? And if we decided to do that, would we have to do some type of amendment and then get approved on the federal level or the state level? Like, I don't know all the weeds about this, but I know what people are asking sounds easy and it may not be.
Yes, so, just a couple things so the public understands this. The surrounding districts gave bonuses because they did not give raises. Guilford County schools gave raises that happen in perpetuity, unlike a bonus that happens one time. So they gave, you gave raises, the raises happen in perpetuity and they count toward the retirement. I think it's unfair to ask staff just to find the money. I think if the board wants this to happen, they ought to identify tonight what you're willing to cut. So you have tutoring, you have counselors, nurses, a community education center, um, you have summer school, and I think there's one other large item in there. And I think if you direct me, if you make a motion, how much you wanna give and what you wanna cut, that would be helpful.
I think the motion was for you to develop that plan.
For what?
For you to develop the plan. We won't know what we wanna cut till we know what it's gonna cost and we can't know what it's gonna cost till we have a plan, is, is that logical?
Well, you have to give me some direction, do you wanna give them $5,000, $1,000? The teachers want them out, the, everyone who got a bonus, should they get a second bonus? You have to give us some direction with that.
Kim, do you, we have Kim still speaking, did you get your questions answered?
Um, not yet, I guess, in regard to, like I said, their email said specifically the S, directing us, asking for the ESER funds. I'm sorry, directing us around the ESER funds, and I know there are guidelines around the ESER funds and are we clear about those guidelines in regard to, I guess we could use the whole pot of money for staff and, you know, for bonuses. I don't believe the federal government gave, gave us this allocation over the next five years to do that. So I, I just wanna know where I can get, even if you can direct me to read the information, I'm okay with that, of what the ESER funds were designed for and not for.
Right, so I think there's a direct line that I sent you tonight directly from the guidance on when and how you can use it for bonuses.
I thought, I thought we discussed that before.
We hadn't discussed it before.
I'm okay now, thank you.
Thank you. Pat and then Winston?
Yeah, my question was, I mean, to use Deborah's, uh, statement, to do it right. And so, looking at the math, I mean, yeah, what are the specifics around? Is it $1,500 and what does that look like when you multiply it over 10, 12,000 employees? And are we gonna sort of extrapolate it out and those that have served our county notably for 10 years versus 15 years, five years? I mean, I think there's gotta be, really, I need to see those details. And, and I think too, I know, I get it, we, we look at other neighboring counties, we're always like, hey, look what they're doing and look what, and, and there are times when we need to paint our own barn, you know, and, and maybe not, I'm not suggesting this is one of those times, but, um, I think this is notable and I'm glad we're talking about it, just like the two days of remote learning, um, other districts are doing it, well, that doesn't make it right. And that's a decision that, you know, anyway, that's a, another discussion, but I, I really need to see, and, and I think too, and maybe someone can answer this, other districts, I, I've talked to two, um, one county is not, it's not ESER funds, they have some sort of.
Fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're dipping into reserves, so let's just all be aware of, um, you know, as someone famously said, you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything you want. So I just, I'll be curious to see what the staff and superintendent come up with and, and how we sort of stratify that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Winston?
Yeah, I have concerns with the motion because of this broad saying to the superintendent who brought us a recommendation about ESER funds, which we approved, now go back and come up with raises, no parameters, no dollar amount, give everybody a raise, um, and tell us how you think you should do it, um, without us giving, you know, guidance to that. So I, I'm concerned about the nebulous nature of that, the amount of work it will take staff to do between now and early December when there are, um, a variety of other issues. I, I agree, you know, I think Wake County used $40 million or something out of its, I don't remember, some, I read some number out of their reserve funds, not ESER funds. I think what's lost often in this conversation is the nuance of raises that over three years become even more than what a one-time bonus is, there's a, a variety of that. I also have a clarifying question about, you know, there's $20,000 recruitment bonuses come up a lot in community conversation, how many of those have we actually done, even if it's an estimate, Dr. Morrison? Three, so we've done three $20,000 recruitment bonuses, that's $60,000. It, it's not as if we've spent $20 million on brand-new teachers to the district and we're not honoring the current teachers. So, uh, I also am deeply concerned about, um, what happens when we don't have enough money to give, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing teachers say it better be $3,000 or nothing, right? And when you do the math on that kind of bonus over three years, and if we don't have the money to offer what's, um, meaningful, we end up in a situation where we've, we've robbed long-term sustainable investments that are gonna pay off over time to offer sort of broad-based bonuses that don't make people happy because we don't have enough money to really make people happy and to solve the morale problem. So, um, I, I don't, I, I don't pretend that this is just easy, um, but I think there's a lot being lost in the conversation, um, and I am deeply concerned about pushing staff, I haven't talked to you Deborah about this, I, we haven't had a work session, we, you know, uh, this is the first articulation here that I've heard of this, let's direct staff to go create bonuses. So I, I think that's a really nebulous and sort of problematic, um, motion for the board to make. I think we, we do need to take seriously the morale of the workforce, we need to hear and understand perhaps more deeply from the staff about the plans that have been put in place and how over time those may shift, we're not gonna shift morale overnight and, so I, I think there's just a lot that's been lost or, um, not considered broadly in the community and that happens in advocacy and, and, uh, I don't think we ought to contribute to that, so, um, I don't know what alternative next step there is to continue to be looking at compensation and morale, but I have concerns with this particular motion and the nebulous nature of it.
Thank you, Deborah, Diane, then Anita.
I will say first off, I don't think I've heard anybody say, you know, oh, you must give me this much or I won't be happy.
I have, I got it in a text today from an educator.
All right, fair enough, um, but I, with the open-ended nature of this, I was trying to, you know, give as much access to whatever resources that, that Dr. Contreras and her thought, her staff thought might be usable. You know, I definitely did not want to say, you know, this must come from ESER funds because there again, I, I understand the misgivings that may be behind that. The flip side to that is, you know, if we wind up not using, um, you know, all of these $20,000 new employee, uh, sign-on bonuses, that's money left over. Um, you know, we have unfilled positions, uh, that may be money left over. Are, are we going to get, you know, more of these small grants like we have for retention and recruitment of the nutrition staff, um, that we may be able to put some money somewhere else? I was simply trying to give as much flexibility as genuinely possible because I think just saying, oh, you must pull X from Y and Z, you know, I, I thought, in my opinion, that was making it unnecessarily difficult by drawing too hard a line.
Thank you, Deborah, Diane?
Okay, I'm probably not gonna be popular tonight, uh, but that's okay. The first thing I think that's not being heard here is the fact that, uh, all, all classified staff got raises in August.
Yes.
And those raises were based on.
Wait, you said which staff, the teachers or?
Classified.
The certified.
No, 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 I'm sorry, certified, I meant, okay, teachers, yes, all teachers got?
Yes.
Okay, and those raises were based on years of service or just what? I mean, as far as how much different teachers got?
So the, the local supplement schedule was revised to increase, uh, supplements at every, um, step, thank you Sharon, at every step, um, and, uh, to get everybody up to a minimum of $610 a month for their local supplement.
So, so the, so you're saying the raise was $610?
No, it, it, we, we worked to get everybody to at least a $610 supplement, the lowest we had was $409 a month, so we brought everybody up to at least $610.
Okay, and that's their raise?
A month.
A month, right. They haven't gotten their step increase yet for this year, but they, they have the last two years, um, all certified staff have got their step increase, which, um, if you're under 15 years of experience, that's a thousand dollars a month and, and again, that's just certified staff, classified staff, haven't gotten any kind of state salary increase in the last two years.
Okay, I wanna make sure I'm understanding, so what you're saying is, is that teachers received at least a thousand dollars more a month and some did?
No.
In their, in their paycheck, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 that's, that was, no, that was the, for 21, 22, everybody got an increase in their local supplement. Some got more than others, depending on where they were on this, where, what step they're on, but we brought everybody to at least 600, so that their supplement is at least $610 a month, it's not a $610 increase, it's so that their supplement is at least $610 a month.
And, and the supplement is paid out how many times?
It's once a month.
So they do get that amount each month?
For 10 months, yes.
But it's not a raise, you need to further clarify that, they could've been at 400, it might be a $200 a month raise.
Right, it's, it's a, it could be a different, it's a different amount increase depending on what step you're on.
Okay, so, I, I, I am to understand that more money was put in the pockets of each teacher as of this school year?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, and that will continue?
Yes, I mean, that's eight million dollars that we, that we, that this board voted in August to go ahead and start increasing the supplement for teachers perpetually.
Okay, so that means if I, and I know I'm not the math genius here, but that means that if a one-time bonus was a thousand dollars and the supplement is $600 a month, right?
That's not the increase in the supplement, that's the total supplement amount, the increase is different depending on what step you're on, but if your increase was a hundred dollars, then you would get a thousand dollars over the year.
Over the 10, over the 10 months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but it's more likely that people got more than that, right?
I, I don't wanna say, I don't know the numbers, um, of who got how much, of how many got how much, so I don't know those numbers.
Okay, all right, so, okay, but, okay, but my, what I'm trying to, to establish here is that it's not like we have not heard or tried to address, uh, teacher pay. And if I understand, having something over a 10-month period as opposed to a one-time bonus that could be as little as $500 or it could be as much as 5,000 if you could find that much for every teacher, which I kinda doubt, oh, it, it would make more sense to push at trying to get that supplement increased even more for the next, uh, school year than a one-time bonus that may not be able to be given again. Am I making, uh, any sense here? Okay, all right, I wanna make sure I was making sense.
The superintendent has certainly pushed that with county commissioners and, and county commissioners again funded eight million dollars to increase the supplements, which again are throughout a teacher's career, applied toward retirement, so again, it'll have an impact on their pension, which is, you know, forever, um, as long as they're receiving their pension and so the, um, the superintendent's worked with county commissioners to, to push to get within five years that supplement amount up to the highest in the state, so I mean, that's really, that's really where the benefit is in my opinion for teachers.
Okay, then my, my next question has to do with, do you recall in the last at least two years, how many bonuses have we given at different levels for staff? I don't care what, is that too much of a question?
So, um, if you may recall that in, um, the 2019, 20 budget, as we ended the budget, we, uh, the board approved using some fund balance to provide, um, bonuses for bus drivers and then, um, so those were paid in, uh, 2019, 20, in 2021 and then we've, we've also paid some in 21, 22, so bus drivers have gotten, um, 250 or $500 bonuses depending on when they've been paid. Are you asking me about all bonuses? Okay, um, in 2019, 20, in May of 2020, all of our classified staff, except bus drivers and school nutrition who had gotten a raise, got a bonus of $535 that was prorated for part-time staff. In 2019, or in June 2020, our ACES site coordinators and group leaders who had worked in the childcare centers received a bonus from DHHS. In, uh, 2021, uh, October 2020, our principals received a, a state bonus paid by NCDPI of varying amounts depending on, uh, school performance. In, um, December 2020, our classified staff received a bonus ranging on, um, on where they were on the pay grade, um, with those, when the lower pay grades receiving a higher bonus than those on the higher pay grades. Again, in December 2020, our bus drivers received a bonus of $500. Our classified staff who earned less than $15 an hour received a bonus in August of 2021, um, and then we have retention bonuses for principals and assistant principals in, uh, July of 2021.
Okay, thank you, okay, so basically what you're telling me is that Guilford County schools and the policy of the superintendent and support of the board has been pro-bonus because I think you have named off at least 20 different kinds of times that bonuses have been given just over the last two years.
Right, and, and let me say this, I, I don't wanna say that she, that we're pro-bonus at the exclusion of salary increases. I think that, that when we haven't had the funds available for recurring salary increases, we've used the dollars we've had to give bonuses to staff where we all recognize that a salary increase is preferable to the bonus, um, in these instances.
I, I guess my point is, is that I think that Guilford County has been looked at as not being sensitive to bonuses, uh, in comparison to our other school districts around, and that's not the case, but we can't spend what we don't have. And I think that, uh, finance and, and the superintendent have done a good job in trying to find monies to give bonuses when they can and still meet their fiduciary responsibilities. I mean, you just can't, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul and this board has been, um, pro, um, edu- And this board has been, um, pro, um, education. I know that sounds simple, but what I'm trying to say here is, we, we have tried to put our dollars into, into the tools that help us to educate our children. Not saying that paying staff and teachers is not, uh, important, but there are other tools that we also have had to invest in, including our failure, our, not ours necessarily, but county commissioners, in not funding us being able to keep our schools up to par. So you, 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 you have to balance what you got to pay for. I mean, we, we approved tonight a chiller system for A school. Now, I know all of us back in August and September got bunches of emails from families saying, it's too hot for my child to be in this school. We're going to get emails and, and whenever the temperature drops again, that, you know, my classroom is cold. We got to decide here, how do we do this? Oh, and, and that affects even the teachers. We've had teachers, this meeting and the meeting before, stand up here and tell us what their work conditions are like, whether it's putting, you know, 20 trashcans down a hall, trying to raise bookshelves to keep, uh, materials from getting wet. So we just can't just say, bam, find some more, uh, bonus money. That's not the way it works. And, and if the teachers understand, I would rather have a consistent paycheck and raise that's going to be mine until I decide to retire, as opposed to getting a bonus check that you can buy, you know, two things for Christmas and it's gone. You can't even fill up your car five times, it's gone. Which do you want here? This instant gratification stuff has to stop. And if it has to stop with us, it has to stop with us. As far as people leaving, if you look at what the national trends are, because of the pandemic, people found that they could work from home. People found that they could create themselves again. And so if somebody decides that, you know, they've given 15 years to teaching and now they can make more money, uh, being on TikTok and, and showing, you know, uh, how to make cookies, then albeit, you know, we, we are a, we are capitalistic society. We believe in people being able to make, uh, money. Some people found that they liked being at home, or that they liked not having to report at 7:30 in the morning, stand out in the cold, wait for a bus of kids to get off, and then be in a classroom all day. Some people found, and they, and it was so, so, what's so weird about it is, we didn't know we had those options until the pandemic shut us down. So whenever you're saying people are leaving, people are leaving all kinds of industries. It ain't just education. They're, they're going to other, other things that they want to do. And, you know, some of us up here, I'm sure, found that it was easier to work from home than have to engage with people every day. So all I'm saying is, let's, let's not, let's be very logical about deciding at this time, do we need to give bonuses? And it's not that we don't care about our staff. We've tried to adjust ourselves in every way. You know, we seem to forget that this, this system, our system, kept, what was it, Dr. Contreras? 90% of staff employed when everybody else shut down. Nobody else in the county did that. No business, nobody.
We did.
And we created jobs for, we created opportunities for people to work that were, had been, as some gentleman said, the schools were cleaner when we had bus drivers helping the custodians. But we did that. So all I'm saying is, be more logical about, you know, yeah, am I going to probably get cussed out tonight? Yeah, but I'm trying to be logical about how we spend the dollars we have. We had Representative, uh, Quick here saying they might pass a budget this next week. Wow, three years later. I mean, nothing, nothing personal, but it's taking y'all too long. And, you know, you, you should have a responsibility, not you necessarily, I didn't know you'd stay here, I wouldn't be talking about you. But, uh, you, you, a, a, and your folks down in Raleigh should not require us to pass a, a budget, but y'all ain't passed one in three years. So, okay, but all I'm saying is, you know, you need to lead by example if you want us. And if there's, if you got money in your budget for us to give bonuses, please give it to us, because we need it.
If I can just clarify, um, a couple points here. I think what is always upsetting about, uncomfortable about these conversations is it sort of pits neighbor against neighbor in that every board member on this dais here, the superintendent, the staff, has worked to make sure staff is compensated fairly. Irrespective of political party, this is one point where I feel the board has agreed and worked on this. And the teachers received a raise. There were staff who received bonuses, this, another group of employees who have not received anything yet. And when, with a district started doing this bonus model, there was no impetus for the state to fix the funding problem. And that's what the real issue is. And correct me if I'm wrong, um, Pastor Quick, but I believe there's an $8 billion surplus in Raleigh, $8 billion. So for the minute we can bring some relief, some joy, $500, $1,000, something, but it doesn't fix the problem in January, when you're struggling again, or next year, when not only have we, um, blown out the ESAR money, but there's no money in there anymore for supporting students. I gave the board a, a report tonight of, about how many students are projected not to pass the state test in math. You can see for some groups of students, and it's disaggregated by raise, it's up to 91%. So the teachers will have to struggle with that as well. That's causing stress in the classroom that teachers have to try to catch students up with no resources. We went back and did what you asked and put 25 chillers in the budget, because the schools don't have air conditioning. We put $18 million in cameras, security cameras. So everyone keeps asking to spend the same pot of money over and over, but nobody's demanding that the General Assembly come off the $8 billion and fund public schools fairly. And that's what the conversation should be. Not that the Board of Education doesn't care about you, not that the superintendent doesn't care, but that the General Assembly has $8 billion and hasn't come off of one dime for educators. That's what we should be angry about. I am more than willing to go back and do whatever you all ask me to do for the bonuses, but you're just going to hurt some other area, and that's fine. But I all want us to know that we're going to be crying about this again in a few months. So I just need some direction on what I should cut.
Anita? Then Betty?
These bonuses are, are not bonuses. The key word is retention bonuses. Our teachers have been under extraordinary stress levels. Yes, they appreciate the, the raises. There's not one who has said otherwise. But when they know what they've been through in a class, these kids were out of school for a year. They forgot how to act, and the teachers are having to deal with that. The teachers have lost it because of the shortage. They've lost planning time. Uh, morale is at an all-time low. Teachers are taking retirement when it's possible for them to do so. Teachers are resigning because it's hard work. And if we can do anything to make that stop, then we have an obligation to do it. It's been said many times in the past that we should not be dictating the how, just the what. So for us to sit here and to say, we want X dollars out of this pot, it's not fair to this board. That's what we have an administration for.
Betty?
I have heard everything that, um, my colleagues have said and agree with most, um, things that have been mentioned. However, I really do think we need, if we can, find some money. And I know you're probably saying, where and how much? I don't know where, and I don't know how much. But hopefully, I'm going to put Angie on the spot, hopefully she has this magic rock somewhere where she can find something. And it may not be what we want to give or what they should, what they, what they deserve, but I just hope we can find something, um, for the retention, for the teachers. Thank you.
Deborah, and then Kim?
And, you know, the thing of it is, is I, I, I'm not going to tell any of you that you're wrong. You know, Diane, y- you're absolutely right. It, it's, it's a short-term gratification. It sure is. But it may be a very real one. It may be, you know, a little, little more at Christmas. It may be a mani-pedi. Um, it, it may be a night out with a babysitter and no kids, which, a, a, anybody else really desperately need that, need that right now? Just me? Okay, got it. But, um, and, and Dr. Contreras, you're not wrong. It certainly does feel like robbing Peter to pay Paul. Um, and, and like I said, that's why I wanted to leave this open for you to be able to, and, and, you know, Angie with her apparent golden goose, uh, to, to work however we could. Uh, but what I'm hearing from a lot of the teachers is that, yeah, they are, they are retiring early, and some are leaving the profession, but I've had many, many, many tell me, all I have to do is cross the county line and I'll go get that bonus. Um, and that's what I desperately would like to avoid. Yeah, all I can think of. I, I really don't have, uh, much else to say. I just, oh, Angie, can I ask you one question? We, um, thank you for the list of bonuses. That was very helpful. Have we given the teachers any direct bonus? Not, not the raise. I'm very thankful for the raise, and they are too. Have we given the teachers a direct bonus?
I don't know if your mic's on, Angie.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, October 2020, the teachers got a $350 bonus from the state. Um, that same year, they did get their, uh, step increase, uh, about 1.2%. So they got a salary increase and a bonus that year.
The question isn't if we can, I am certain we can find some amount of money for a group of employees. I need to know who they are. Who you asking me to give bonuses to? I need a definitive number. Is it the teachers? Is it teachers and support staff, which would include library, media people, uh, counselors, psychologists, social workers? Is it bus drivers? Is it the data managers who wrote to you today saying they're working at two and three schools and doing all the extra work? Is it school nutrition workers? Who is it that you want me to find the bonus for?
Kim, and then Diane, and then Winston?
Well, and just a caveat, or in addition to that, it, under the use of ESAR funds, you would have to specify by position or group like that in order to do it.
And if it's a retention bonus, if they were to leave, they would have to pay it back.
Okay, um, I, 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 I've been here, I guess, almost 10, 11 years in Guilford County, and this has been the conversation. I've been a part of GCAE when we've gone to Raleigh, asked for them to, you know, begging these legislators, you know, to do right by educators. And then, you know, it comes back down to the local, begging, you know, the county commissioners. And it's never, I just don't see how it's ever really going to be enough for the educators and the work that they do. And I do think that we do need to be advocating for some type of, you know, for a long-term goal of how North Carolina is going to treat its educators. And one thing we have to remember that when we are moving funds away from students, away from instruction, away from teacher development, away from those things, it then impacts the ability of the teacher again. Um, when we move the resources out of the classroom, um, for those same individuals, and then they will come back and say, you know, the job is getting harder. We've talked about the teacher pipeline, and I believe that's part of the ESAR funds to try to close the gap and so, and, you know, te- recruiting teachers and getting teachers, you know, and create a pipeline of teachers, of sustainability, of getting teachers into the district. And lots of times I know that this board will say, our fiduciary responsibility will come into play, and then we'll say, well, the superintendent didn't meet this goal, but then we took the resources and we did something else with those resources, so then it impedes on the superintendent meeting those educational goals. So these are all the moving parts I think that we have to think about. And if we want to have a long, a, a different discussion, you know, in another retreat session to talk about how we feel around bonuses, how, and, and things of that nature, I think that's the conversation that we need to have, as opposed to deciding, because I'm not willing to pull any money from any kid out of any classroom, out of any one of my schools. I'm not willing to do that. I'm, I'm just not willing to do that, because our bottom line is education. So we have to hold fast to that bottom line, because those same parents will come back and say, this is happening and this is happening, and you gave the teachers bonuses, and things like that. You took my kid's money and you did this with it. So we have to be just very careful, and I think we need a different conversation, a separate conversation around this whole dynamic of bonuses and raises and that whole dynamic, and helping the public to understand the impact. And when we created this budget, I don't remember too much about teachers coming, you know, with, even with the ESAR fund, saying, you know, we need bonuses. They did advocate, and there is something in there. So I'm, I'm just, you know, I need us to come together and, and rethink how we're going to appreciate our teachers and, and, and the whole staff, really, you know, bus driver, everyone, everyone in Guilford County. All 10,000 are important to me. Um, and we know what's going to happen. You gave this one this, and then you didn't give this one that. Those are hard conversations, and I don't want to see us to continue to be in those hard, rock conversations, um, with the staff. We do appreciate them, and I do believe we want them to have what they need to have, um, and to do their jobs. And we want to lift their morale, and maybe there are other ways that we can, you know, lift people's morale. And if I'm right, again, with the retention bonus, I'm going to ask a question. Would that be something that would have been given at the end of the year? And wait until people, um, you know, go to the end of the year? Or is that something that would have to be allocated immediately? Like, I've never heard of that, so I, I need to understand the nature of it.
If it's under the ESAR funds, it would be required to, that, that someone be retained for a future period of time, not that they've already worked for you. So, um, you, when you pay it, I think you would still have to have, that, that could be decided. But what you want to make clear is that anybody who doesn't fulfill the agreement loses it. So it gets deducted from their last check. So it's a condition of staying if it's a retention bonus. And if it's using ESAR funds, it has to be tied to future performance, not just, you've been here, so here's some money.
So in other words, it could not be allocated in your last paycheck if you're a 10-month employ- employee?
It could, but I, 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 you know, I'm, I would be surprised if what you'd, you'd decide to do is, as long as you're still here in June, we're going to give you some money. It's probably going to be a longer-term goal than that, I would think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, Winston, and Anita.
Okay, um, Dr. Morrison, if I can put you on the spot. How, how effective in your knowledge, as far as, uh, best practices, has retention bonuses been? You know, we, 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 as you're coming up, you know, we, we have this bad habit of latching on to whatever the, the... on to whatever the, the flavor of the day word is. So right now, the flavor of the day word is retention. Okay. But is it effective? Do we have any data that tells us it is?
We, I don't have data in front of me at this moment that shows, you know, that it is. I think the fact that we only have three people to accept a $20,000 bonus speaks very loudly to, you know, what people think about paying me to come.
There's some research on it, that it has to be a very large bonus.
A large, a large amount.
Like, small bonuses don't retain you. It has to be a large amount to get people to stay. There is $6 million in counselors in this budget. You can give every employee $600.
Okay. The, the other point of this is that sometimes bonuses have not exactly been appreciated. In fact, I saw emails today when we gave, I think it was ACES, maybe, a bonus, and I think it was $150 or it might have been food services, anyway, $150. And then by the time their taxes were taken out, it was $138. And they felt insulted by that. Because, you know, it was our nutrition staff and our bus folk who were out there on those buses delivering food and stuff when teachers were able to stay at home and be safe. I mean, you know, that, that was the reality of it. But we didn't compensate teach, I mean, the bus, the nutritional staff, nor the bus drivers at what would be the same level as we did teachers. And we don't. They don't get paid as much. And yet, their jobs, doing that part of that, of the pandemic for us was critical. We couldn't have done what we did. We would not have been able to stay in touch with as many children. If those bus drivers who sat on those buses un-air-conditioned, because I saw them out there on some of those side streets with Wi-Fi. But they weren't compensated with bonuses or, or pay, because we had to fight just to get them $15 an hour. And I'm not sure that all our classified staff, Ms. Henry, are getting $15 an hour, all classified staff who are under $15 an hour. We haven't, have we given everybody who is, or, or is it, is it, I guess this is a HR and a finance question, or is it still based on qualifications? Or are we giving everybody who is a classified employee $15 an hour?
No, we still have salary schedules that start less than $15 an hour.
All right. I mean, so, so we, we still have people under $15 an hour? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. Now, we, we are using some funds, we are using some funds to, as you, in the plan that you approved, to bring those people up to $15 an hour for this year and next year. But that's not recurring. Those are one-time funds that we're using to get everybody up to $15 an hour.
So after these two years over, if it's possible that their salaries could drop back?
Right. Unless we, unless the state holds true to their promise to move everybody up to $15 an hour in the second year of this budget. And we have local funds to match that for our locally funded staff.
I'd like to make a suggestion to my, my colleague, is that, is it necessary for this to be a motion? I think that the staff already has heard us as far as, you know, working on trying to see, can they find this golden rock that y'all seem to think is out there? And I think that it would be done in good faith, as it has in previous times. I mean, even when we didn't ask them if they were able to find additional money to give bonuses, they didn't, they didn't take it and scurled away. They came to us and said, hey, we found this part of money. We would like to use it for bonuses. So I would, I ask if you would rescind your motion and just allow staff to come back with us. Because, I mean, I don't have any doubt that they haven't heard us tonight and that they're not gonna come back with whatever recommendations that they can give us.
We, we have Winston and Anita. And then Deborah can respond.
I mean, I largely agree with Diane's notion that conversation around this is good, and I think we need further conversation around it. I think it's untenable choices. But I, I understand the desire to find a magic rock for us to, to, you know, direct the staff to do that. And I know that's not what you mean. You're using a euphemism. But I mean, I also, in the good governance notion where Anita says, you know, it's our job to say the what, not the how. I mean, we passed the Esser plan. We passed a budget. So are we doing a motion to rescind those things, to reconsider the budget, to reconsider the Esser plan? Like, we don't just sit up here and just make up new stuff to spend money on and say, go tell us how to do it. Like, that's also not good governance. So we have a budget process. We've had an Esser plan process. We, so clearly, we have, you know, advocacy, and I understand how that works. And I understand how it pulls on our desire to do something to solve the problem. And I think ongoing discussion about morale and compensation and our understanding the pressures that the superintendent and the leadership team are under, understanding the legal ramifications are important. And so I think the conversation has been good. But I am concerned about a motion under all of these circumstances.
Thank you, Anita.
What I'm about to say is not gonna be popular, but I'm gonna say it anyway. We spent at least a year, probably two, working in conjunction with the county commissioners to develop a master facilities plan. And we've recently asked, I think, I think we asked for $1.7 billion ask of the commissioners to fund the, the next step of the facilities plan. That plan included a number of new facilities and a number of renovations throughout the county. And they are needed. No doubt about it. They are needed. What we didn't include was an education center in that plan. So we received $307 million of Esser funds in the Esser plan that we approved. And in that, there was $34,999,998. Don't ask me where that figure came from. I would have given them $2. To build that community education center on the Hamptons, I think the plan was the Hampton School site. That should have been in the facility study, should have been in the master plan. I don't think that's what Esser money was for. Esser money is to recover lost education. And I think our teachers have earned that through their diligence and their hard work and their continuing day in and day out. We can't get subs in this county. Our teachers are having to cover, I've been to 12 schools now, and every single one of them. When I asked what their greatest need was, they said subs. They can't get subs. They need subs. Teachers are giving up their planning periods to cover classes because they don't have substitute teachers. So I'm saying all that to say, our poor planning resulted in almost $35 million of Esser funds being spent for an education center that we may need. But I know that it won't matter if our teachers all bail, or a number of our teachers bail and exacerbate the problems that we already have.
So let me correct that. So, yeah, it was initially in the plan. We had to cut $600 million out of the plan to get it down to $2 billion. That's how great the needs of the district were. So it wasn't poor planning. And you should know that because you sat on the committee. The $35 million you absolutely can use for this, that's up to the board to change their budget.
Betty.
As far as the, the center on Hampton's property, that was in, in the plan. There is hardly nothing going on the southeast side of Greensboro. And that was in the plan.
That, that was not, what, which plan?
The, the Esser plan.
Yeah, I know. But I'm not saying they don't need it and, and deserve it. I'm saying it should have been in the master facilities plan. It is a building. I can't help but think-
I understand that. But when we all looked at the Esser budget.
I didn't vote for it, so.
Okay. We may not have voted for it, but it, it was there. So that community center was in, in that Esser plan as far as being documented.
I, I see it. I know it's in there. But what I'm saying is, when we developed our facilities plan, and by the way, Sharon, I got taken off that committee before it was finalized, so. I was not. When the final plan was made, I was not there because I asked too many questions. So I got told to go do something else. That's the bottom line. So anyway, that's a building. It should have been in the facilities plan. Whether it would have been in the first $300 million or the next $1.7 billion, or the next $2 million, or whatever, it should have been in there.
So, Deborah, before you respond to Diane's request to change your motion to a request for the superintendent and staff to come back with recommendations, the last thing that I wanna do is pit employees against employees, parents against parents, and anybody against the district over this. This is a very complex situation. This is a cultural issue. We have so devalued education in this country that no amount of raises and bonuses will adequately compensate our employees for the things that they do. And we can't fix this with the nickel and diming that we have done in the, in the two decades that I have been on this board. The morale isn't going to last very long. I mean, and the, the exit surveys with companies and, and human resource agencies show that the morale doesn't last very long. And compensation is not the primary reason why people leave. I mean, people are, have decided all kinds of things, I think, as Diane and Pat have said. I mean, car dealers, you know, are holding on to their cars because they don't have enough inventory. Women, I mean, in huge numbers, millions of women have decided not to return to the workforce in all kinds of positions. People who have executive positions at major corporations in this country, because they're able to make different decisions because of what we learned during this pandemic. So to act like Guilford County Schools is this alone entity that people are leaving because we don't care about them is exploitive. The center at Hampton, there has been a lot of conversation about what we were gonna do to replace that facility in the community. And that, among many things that we've heard from our employees, is that they haven't had the professional development education to do the things that we're asking them to do. There's reading programs, math programs, things we haven't been able to implement because people have not had the educational resources and time to even be able to do that. And so I, I'm all for the compensation. I just think we just have to stop acting like it's going to fix this. It's gonna fix morale. It's going to fix, you know, the, the staffing issues that we have here. Because it is not. And we have seen that. I, I got an email too, Diane. Somebody was just like, oh, that last bonus you gave us, I couldn't gas up my car twice with that. Because people are undervalued and underpaid. That happened way before any of us got on this board. So I, I, I think it's a huge issue. Until we have a substantial increase and, and, and value assigned to the compensation of, of employees, then we are always gonna be in this situation. Always. And I, I hope as a board that we can figure out how to have that conversation and, and not the conversation that is accusing and exploitive and, and, putting, pitting our employees against each other. Because we will start getting emails from other sets of employees here that are not getting adequate compensation right away. Then we're gonna come back and say, well, what are you gonna do for the school nutrition workers? What are you gonna do for the bus drivers? What are you gonna do for the custodians? What are you gonna do for the teachers? What are you gonna do for this group? We will get those immediately. So we have taken something very complex and nuanced and tried to make it so simple, we think that it can be fixed, or we're suggesting that it can be fixed by finding something somewhere. Instead of bringing ourselves together to say, what can we do, knowing that we're gonna have to give up something else? What can we all agree to shave, to give up, that we all know and believe is important, if this is what it is that we wanna do? So I hope we bring a better spirit to our decision-making. Because this is the last thing that we wanna do, is people are under tremendous pressure right now. And not just because of things that they have to do in school, because of what's happening at home, because of what's happening with utilities, because of what's happening with the supply chain. All kinds of things are impacting employee morale. So Deborah, if you want to respond to Board Member Bellamy Small's request, this is the opportunity to do so.
Oh, well, but I wanna tuck a little thing in there first. You know, as we speak about employee morale, I mean, please don't sell what, what we've all already done short so far. Have you gotten the thank you letters or thank you emails from teachers about the two asynchronous days from Thanksgiving? I mean, we are, that's one of the, you know, goals here is to, you know, look at a more holistic picture. And Dr. Contreras, you were spot on with that suggestion. They're thankful for that time to be able to work. I've had students talk to me and thank me and say, thank you. I've got time to catch up on my classes. I, I, I agree with you that this is not a one-stop-and-shop, one-stop-done-shop. And, but I don't think we're treating it that way either. I think we're giving our employees a little more, like I said, holistic approach than just fling some money at it and be done. We're already, we're at least giving them that respect, I hope. And they seem to be taking it in such a manner. Rescinding the motion. Would that make things easier for you, Dr. Contreras, to, to step back from a motion and say, can we look at something next meeting?
I can tell you that I can take any of the positions in this budget and change positions into money for bonuses. I still can't tell you how much unless you tell me as a board what you want that to go to, or who you want it to go to. So if you say some districts gave it to all employees, and that's the other thing I think we don't have a sense of, most of the surrounding districts aren't near the size of Guilford. So giving $5,000 to a district with 500 employees is not the same as Guilford County spending $37 million to give every employee $5,000. It's just different. So, you know, I think we can find another 8 million if we remove the counselors, the nurses, the mobile buses for tutoring. We can do that. But I need to know, is that just for teachers? Or is this for all 10,000 employees?
Given the fact that we've already got bonuses, like built-in for nutrition staff and things like that, why don't we, for the immediate future, make this, let's look at teachers?
And support teachers, like, support staff like counselors, library, media people? Because they're all in the same building?
Yeah. That sounds good.
So how many people is that in total?
And there again.
Okay. So approximately 5,600 people to provide bonuses for.
I know we do have holes in our current staffing. So, you know, if there's any extra money from personnel, that, from positions that we aren't paying out, what else? And I, you know, I, I'm a huge advocate for the counselor and nurses positions. And I think, you know, I think you guys know that. It's been a thing for me.
You mean in the Esser budget? Because you can't take the staffing money in the general fund. Is that right?
No. Right. If the state's giving us position allotments, we can't convert those to dollars to use for staffing. So for teacher positions, if they are vacant, we can't use those dollars for, we can't convert those dollars to other dollars because they're, for bonuses. Yeah.
I was under the impression that we could.
Also, what we're, what we're saving in local teacher positions, we're spending on the subs and paying the teachers for, to use their planning time to cover. So we're, we've already redirected those dollars.
Great. Thank you.
She, she's saying that 5,600- She, she's saying that five thousand six hundred fifty to provide a budget, some bonus for five thousand six hundred fifty people, and that's the teachers and support. And I would like Dr. Morrison to please tell us who that includes so that the board is clear in who the support staff are.
What's the motion on the floor?
It's not a motion. I think-
This is a licensed personnel-
Yes, licensed person.
Licensed personnel in schools, and that would be your teachers, your counselors, your media specialists, um, your facilitators, your instructional coaches, the instructional folks in the school buildings. That's, this is instructional licensed personnel in the school buildings. That's like your counselors, your teachers, your counselors, your media specialists, your instructional coaches, your facilitators. These are not your licensed individuals who are in the central office levels.
School-based licensed-
Personnel.
Person, professional instructional-
Those staff in, in school buildings.
They include social workers? Diane?
All right, I, you know, this is exactly what the Madam Chair, you said you didn't want, but, you know, I would have to say, okay, you got teachers assistants that are in those classrooms. Some of them are actually covering class uh, because of teacher, because, because of the teacher shortage, okay? You've got office personnel who are the first people that people come in contact with, so they have been on the front lines. I mean, you know, if you start down this road, you know, some of us are going to catch it from classified employees that, you know, we, how, you know, that we would do this for half of our GCS folk and leave this other- I mean, that's, that's what the, the board chair just talked about, the devaluing of certain positions. That person who's in there wiping up stuff and, and exposing themselves to, to picking up masks, I've noticed that mask is still there. Nobody touched it, and it was left here. Now, I'm sure that, uh, the, the custodian staff, when we leave, he has to do it. So is he not valuable? Should he not get a bonus?
Yes, he should.
I mean, you know, you start down this road, then we need to do it for all ten thousand employees.
So Deborah, it'll probably have to be in a form of a motion instead of just picking what it is that you're wanting to consider.
You're doing the job of superintendent and staff. You, you know, we can't sit here and decide who should and who shouldn't.
Call the question. I call the question.
You can restate your earlier motion or make a new motion, Deborah, in light of the conversation.
I believe the motion on the floor was to instruct the superintendent to bring to the board a plan to provide bonuses. But then there was an awful lot of discussion about what it was, it wasn't, and who was included, so beyond that, I couldn't tell you.
I don't think there was a second. Oh, Linda, Linda, that's right.
I second her motion to have the superintendent investigate what options we had to provide bonuses.
Is your mic on, Linda?
Uh, sorry. I seconded Ms. Naffers' motion to ask the superintendent to investigate what options we had to provide bonuses to the teaching staff. That was where we were. Now, it's kind of gotten a little broader, but that was what I believe the motion was.
So is that the motion you're sticking with? All right. Please vote.
Was there, was there a deadline? Was it, was it in, in as soon-
By the next meeting.
By the next meeting.
And that passes by a vote of five to four. All right, we are now at closed session. Is there a motion?
I move we go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters protected by state law.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Well, we need to come back in open session with any information? We will?
We have to vote.
Okay, we'll have to come back in open session? Okay, all right.
Do you want to do a poll?
No, we have to come back and and handle business.
We make a denum to the personnel report. Second.
Second. There's a second? Um, all those in favor, please vote. Winston and Diane had to leave.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Did we have a call?
That's all you're going to get.
All right, that passes unanimously. I'll turn it over to Dr. Contreras.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appoint Redisa Lockhart as the principal of the Academy at Smith. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Um, we are now at board comments, uh, and I will start with Deborah.
First off, I want to say how much I hated missing the, uh, Nighthawks Whirlies game last Friday. I saw clips and everybody that was there said that it was fit of an NFL game, so congratulations to the Whirlies for taking it. Uh, and everybody said it was a sight to see, so thank you guys for that. After tonight's debate, you know, I just want to say that, you know, we're, we're, we really are genuinely looking for ways to show our staff what their value is and, and how we appreciate you sticking with it. The example that comes to mind is, uh, my daughter Sabrina's teacher a few years ago, when COVID first hit. She had just graduated from ANT in December, took over the classroom, was in that class for six weeks when COVID hit. And in one week, had to go from just setting up her classroom and maybe starting to feel like she had her feet up underneath her to a complete pivot with seven days prep work into digital online learning. It was absolutely amazing to watch her. And I know the effort that went into that, and I know the effort that all of our teachers have put into all of this COVID everything. And we just want to find a great way to say thank you, and we're working towards that. Um, even if it doesn't wind up being money. Please know, all of us, as, as Dr. Contreras and Dina mentioned, all of us sincerely thank you for what you are doing. Yes, and all of us, especially, you know, Pat, myself, those of us who have kids sitting in the classroom and see firsthand everything that's being done. It's been absolutely amazing, and knock on wood, hopefully the light at the end of the tunnel this time with this COVID mess is not another oncoming train. Am I right?
Thank you. Anita?
I have been enjoying my Fridays, um, not this one, but the past several visiting schools in my district. What I have seen is learning going on, kids and teachers working hard. I've seen clean facilities, old but clean. Uh, I've seen some pretty sad things with the shape that our schools are in, the physical shape of the buildings. Uh, but, but the kids are amazing. You see the occasional pull your mask up for the, but for the most part, the kids are going about their school day and learning, and our teachers are going about their school day teaching. And I was impressed to no end by what I saw in our schools. And I just want to thank every single teacher, principal, custodian, uh, office worker, and the schools that I've visited and the ones I've yet to visit for all the hard work they put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you. I've had an opportunity, uh, really, uh, to be a part of some community dialogue with, uh, Brooks Global and Kaiser Middle. Thank you, Dr. Oakley and Dr. March, and there are other people that have been involved, so I hate to start name dropping. But it's been a great, um, opportunity. I, I real, I hope we can get more folks to, to participate, and I need to do a better job of, you know, highlighting that and getting, getting the message out. But it's been really good to really, um, uh, hear the input from the community, those in the community that have, many have lived in their neighborhoods a very long time, particularly where Brooks is going to go, the old Craven site. Many of you know where that is. where Brooks is going to go, the old Craven site, many of you know where that is, and to have high caps in our, all of our partners, the architects, together on the call. The questions and the dialogue have been really eye-opening, and so I, I look forward to more of those as, as we move along, and I'd encourage other elected officials and, and those other board members to, to jump on, and again, I'll do a better job of getting the, the message out and getting those links out. Also, in, in light of celebrating American Heritage, Indian, Indian Heritage Month, Lonnie Revels, you know, some of you know, and many young people maybe out there don't know, first Native American to hold public office here in Guilford County as a city council. Many, he really pushed early on with his contacts at the state level to have more Native American representation on boards and commissions. Actually, Lonnie Revels Field, as many of you may know, I played a lot of softball there over the years and, and had the opportunity to meet him when I first moved to Greensboro through the Hurley family. Marshall Hurley and his parents were big supporters of his and really persuaded him to run for office and, and is the first Native American to hold public office here, so I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, everyone, for the work you're doing, all of our teachers, and as we head into kind of that last stretch before exams, just encourage the students to continue to accelerate. You've got more to give. I know sometimes that feels like you don't, but, but you do, and just know that. We're counting on you. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Kim?
Yes, I, I just want to say, you know, I'm grateful to all of our educators, our principals, you know, and all the work that you've been doing throughout this pandemic, and I know that it's probably not over, unfortunately, and it's more work for us to push forward to do. I just also want to say to the schools that I represent, I know that I have been scarce, simply because I've had to do something for my own, a family member, my mother. I've been taking care of my mom, going back and forth and traveling, so don't think that I don't want to come out to your school. I do want to be engaged with your school, but I, I just want to let you know that that's what I've been doing. I'm an only child, I'll let you guys know that, so the care is all on me for my parents, so don't think that I don't want to come to your school, and please don't say that I don't care and that I don't know what's going on. So just, you know, feel free also to reach out to me and, you know, invite me to come to things, because I will not just show up on your door. I believe that I need to be extended an invite to come to your school because school is happening, and because school is happening really different now, dealing with COVID, I don't want to be caught up in, you know, a quarantine right now. I can't afford to be caught up in a quarantine right now, so I am also being very careful about my movement and being exposed or overexposed or not exposed and, and just being careful. So those are some of the reasons why you may not see me out in public as much or at your school, because I'm caring for a 77-year-old mother, and I don't want her to be exposed. So just know that, that that's what's going on with me personally, and that I do want to come out, and as, you know, as soon as that is taken care of for her, I will try to come back out to your schools, but again, you know, I, I see you. I do see you, and please, you know, just reach out to me. I do also want to give a shout out to Mr. McCleary Small at Penn Griffin, our chorus teacher. The performance, you know, not just because my son had a solo for the first time, but it was impressive to hear the voices again and to be at, I wasn't at the performance, unfortunately. I had to watch it online, but just to see families out again, you know, enjoying their children again, it gave, it gave me some hope that we, we are moving in the right direction, and I want to say thank you for June 3rd graduation. That's my daughter's birthday, who also graduated from Penn Griffin, Dr. Contreras, so it's a lot of personal little things that are, you know, happening for us this year. I have a senior, again, graduating from Penn Griffin School for the Arts, and I'm looking forward to him finishing strong, and again, thank you for everything that, you know, the educators are doing and principals. I really do appreciate you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Betty?
Happy Veterans, I'm sorry, Happy Veterans Day to our veterans, and thank you for all you've done for us. I'd like to thank all my principals. I went around to all 16 schools and took them a love gift to show them how much I appreciate them for all the hard work. As far as our community session for the Hampton Peter Vision Performing Arts, I would say the one we had at Bluefoot was phenomenal. We had a lot of inputs, a lot of comments, and we really made a connection with our community, and so we definitely want them to come back and to assist us with their ideas when we have our next one. To our teachers, our complete staff, we give a kind of school, we thank you for all the hard work that you are doing, and we know you will continue to do so. With that being said, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Betty. I want to recognize the Indian Heritage Month by also saying that we don't have a pretty history, and I know talking about history has turned into something because information is not to be told if it makes people feel bad. So while North Carolina is home to the largest population of Native Americans and American Indians east of the Mississippi, it is really hard to actually capture not only the number, as we have laws around blood quantification, the number of people who are Native American or American Indian indigenous people in this country, and the fact that that's the case is not because people just decided to go certain places, but Andrew Jackson, who is the author of the Indian Removal Act, who ordered the forced removal of Native Americans from lands east of the Mississippi to lands west of the Mississippi, the Trail of Tears, where thousands and many, many more American Indians, Native Americans died in that journey but were relocated oftentimes to barren land, oftentimes to land that was not suitable for their culture, and were unable to recreate the food, the medicine, the traditions, and their practices of, of their, of their tribes. And so while we're celebrating, we also have to acknowledge why we even have to recognize certain people in this society, because our goal was extermination and the extinction of American Indian people. You know, the whole boarding school plan was to try to kill the savage and save the citizen or the person, and so we, we just have to be accurate. One of the speakers, just incredible distortion of history tonight, talking about Thomas Jefferson and, you know, all men are created equal, and at the same time, fathered children with a Negro woman that he owned. I mean, I don't, I don't know how you make that right. So we, we have to model how we can be honest, how we can acknowledge America's progress and America's accomplishments, and also some things that we got really wrong, and we can do both of those things. We can bridge this divide, or we can draw lines in the sand and create a very dangerous society, which I, I'm afraid we've done. So I, I hope that we will work together on how we talk about our history in ways that reflect the truth and in ways that don't make anyone feel bad, because the information that has, that is reflected in our history has made a lot of people feel bad about who they are and where they come from, and, and no group of people of, of any difference should be made to feel that way. So with that said, those, I would also like to just say that it has been a very disturbing month, or six weeks or two months, as the superintendent has notified myself and Vice Chair Winston McGregor of some very serious situations, and in some cases, some very fatal situations involving young people, and she is on the phone, she is gathering resources for DoorDash and Instacart and hotel rooms, and we were with Marshall last night and, and Greg Newland last night at the, at the emergency room at Cone, consoling families and supporting each other, and so while, you know, we're having the conversation that we're having behind the scenes, it is just some unbelievable, tragic things that are happening with young people, and, and that's a lot for the superintendent to, and her staff, who have worked long, hard days, and then show up in the emergency room at the scene of a crash, at the home of a family member, to offer their support. So thank you, Dr. Contreras, for the way you show up for all of our children and their families, and thank you to your staff. Thank you, Marshall and Greg, and all of the people, all of you that I have seen, your texting messages, our SROs were there, members of the police department, and people really trying to work together to figure out how to protect children and their families, so.
Update. I just wanted all of the staff to know, because we already see some comments out there, that there will be no recommendation that does not include, from me, all 10,000 employees.
Thank you.
So I do not want anyone to think that we will, that the superintendent would pick and choose one employee group over the other. That might mean that the amount you receive isn't very large, but it would include all 10,000 employees, and I wanted everyone to know that that's what my recommendation will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you and good night.